We'll call the Wilmer City Council meeting for Monday, June 1st to order. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Schwantus.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Meske.
Plowman.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as it's been presented? Councilmember Alvarado?
Could I have a few moments at the end of the meeting?
For what purpose?
Just to give some concerns that I have.
In regards to what item?
Not any of the items on the agenda. Do I have to have an agenda item?
Have you talked with the city administrator about them, or?
No, I did not.
Okay. Generally, we'd like them so that...
Okay.
Is it gonna be with... Is it gonna address staff, because?
No, it's just general, addressed to the general public.
Okay, that's fine, yes. You and I talked about that earlier. Is that the one you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Yep, okay, that'll be fine.
I want one, too, Mr. Mayor. It's an announcement on baseball tournament this weekend.
Okay. So we have two items to add to the agenda. One is a question and comment from Councilmember Alvarado. Another is an announcement from Councilmember Fagerly. Anything else? With that, we would go to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Those who made and seconded approve the agenda as presented? All those in favor, discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion does carry with those two additions. Next, we have consent items. Judy.
On the consent agenda this evening, we have the city council minutes of May 15th, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of May 22nd, Rice Hospital minutes of May 24th, the approval of the Wilmer Lakes Rotary Club application for temporary on-sale liquor license, and to approve the KI County Fair Association application for temporary on-sale liquor license, a resolution for project number 1703A for consideration of a cooperative construction agreement, the 2018 budget calendar, and to accept the Human Rights Commission minutes of April 25th, Central Community Transit Operation Board minutes of May 2nd, Wilmer Community Center Board minutes of May 10th, the Community Ed and Rec Joint Powers Board minutes of May 26th, building report for the month of May 2017, Police Department Statistics Report for the month of April, and the Accounts Payable Report through May 31st, 2017.
Council, what do you wish to do?
To approve.
Those who made to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Those who made and seconded, discussion.
I would like to... Mayor Calvin?
And Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I would like to pull item C, the Rice Hospital minutes of May 24th.
Anything else? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just on the building report, I'm wondering if there's some typos in there. Maybe Mr. Peterson had all was gonna ask beforehand, but didn't get the chance to get back there. I wanted... Okay, before we accept it, this should probably be changed. There's a home in there for $184,000 with a $100 permit fee. And then there's another one for less money and more of a fee. I've highlighted, and I can give them to you afterward if nothing else.
Mayor Calvin, Councilmember Christensen, I can't speak to that directly, but I will take a look at those in the morning, and if there are corrections due, we'll have those made.
Sure, thank you.
So are you willing to leave those in with the understanding that corrections will be made, or do you want to pull them totally?
Sure. No, he can make the corrections.
Okay. So, and if you implore to those to Mr. Holland and also Mr. Peterson?
I will.
Thank you. Anything else? Those in favor of all the items on consent, with the exception of item C, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? I'm sorry, this needs to be a roll call. Sorry about that. Roll call because we have liquor involved, so.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, Councilmember Nelson on the item removed from consent.
Yes. I requested to have that item pulled, and I would like to just address the letter of intent. I am hoping we have Mr. Schramm, our city administrator, and Dr. Cindy Ferkensmith here, and I would like for them to have an opportunity to speak to that. We've had some, Minnesota Nurses Association here also, and realize that this is a very important issue for our community, and I would like to just give our leadership an opportunity to speak. I know there are other Rice Hospital board members here, too, in attendance, and so, if that's okay, I would like to hear from them before we approve it.
Mr. Schramm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, city leadership, thanks for the opportunity to share a few comments with you. I'll just share with you the outcome of our Rice Memorial Board meeting on May 24th. What you've seen before and what's in your packet is the letter of intent that the Rice Memorial Board passed on May 24th. In a reciprocal way, a very similar letter of intent was also approved through the leadership board and the physicians at ACMC Health the night of May 24th as well. You can see in the letter of intent, really it lays out at a much higher level what we aspire to do in partnership with CentraCare Health, which has been a longstanding partner of both of our organizations. We plan to move forward with this approval and the letter of intent to continue discussions and development of a regional healthcare delivery system, one that we think will be very positive, that will help us to enhance care and healthcare services, not only in Wilmer, but regionally as we move forward. So we think in a very positive way, this is a great thing. Our board has spent a lot of time on strategic planning over the last number of years, and I know that ACMC Health and the physicians have as well. So we think this is positive. We think that through a partnership with CentraCare Health in St. Cloud, we can develop a new regional healthcare delivery system, one that would bring Rice and ACMC Health together at the local level. That's something that we think is very important. And again, our goal at the highest level is to enhance our local healthcare delivery system, be able to continue to recruit and retain physicians and other clinical and medical professionals and staff, and to really build on the successes collectively that our respective organizations have had in the past. We think that together, we are better than each of us continuing independently. Certainly, we've had longstanding partnerships, certainly Rice and ACMC Health at the local level, as well as in various ways, both organizations with CentraCare Health, over the past number of years to better care for our patients. So we think that this affiliation and the pursuit of the further development of this regional healthcare delivery system will be a very positive thing for the community. We believe that collectively, again, together, we're better than each of us remaining independent of one another. As we talk about affiliation and partnership with CentraCare Health in St. Cloud, one might ask that question, why? We share geography, we share the same patients, we share very similar values, and we've worked in a, very much in a partnership manner over the past number of years. And I think one of the things that we've talked a lot about also, as we've had these discussions around affiliation, ACMC Health and Rice at the local level in partnership with CentraCare Health, we think that that help and support can help us to bring this to fruition. And our goal is really patient first, and a lot of what we are focusing on as well is local. Enhancing our care at the local level, continuing to be able to provide high-quality, cost-effective healthcare here in Wilmer, right here in our community, and also developing further concepts around how we can govern and make decisions at the local level as well. So that's really at a higher level what we aspire to do. Certainly, plenty more work to be done, as was shared in the public, and after we, our board acted on this on May 24th, we set more of a general timeline of trying to get to further development of the system and decision points later this fall in 2017, and likely going public if assuming all the approvals are granted, both at the city side and the Rice side, as well as at the ACMC Health side, on or around January 1st, so either the 1st of the year or early into 2018. So plenty more to come, certainly whether it would be plenty more detail, it's gonna be coming to the city council. We're really just getting started. What we really asked for in support of the Rice Memorial Board and the ACMC Health physicians at each end was really the approval to move forward with continued discussions and further development of this concept around the idea of a regional healthcare delivery system, one where Rice and ACMC Health would come together and really be fully integrated at the local level. We think that's a really positive thing. It's something that we've been talking about for many years and one that we think now is the right time, given all the changes and what's evolving in healthcare, for us to pursue this and to do so. So I'll leave it with that. Certainly glad to answer any questions, and maybe Dr. Cindy Ferkensmith would like to step up and share a few comments with you as well. We also have board members here and a number of our staff from within the organization, but I'll let Dr. Cindy step to the podium.
Thank you. Dr. Cindy?
Good evening, thank you. I very much appreciate the opportunity to come here. I think Mr. Schramm or Mike really summed it up very nicely for us. All you guys have to do is wake up in the morning and read your Twitter feed or look at the newspaper to know that things are changing really rapidly in the world. I think nothing's changing more rapidly than what's happening in healthcare. We don't know tomorrow or next week what's gonna happen in Washington, but we do know that it's gonna continue to change. We don't know what Washington's gonna tell us to do from a healthcare standpoint or healthcare delivery standpoint, but we do know that we want to be on the leading front of directing that care locally. Anything that we can do to work together in order to enhance healthcare delivery locally, that is our goal. Our goal is to deliver the right care at the right place, at the right time, for the right sustainable price for the people that we serve. ACMC has been in the business of taking care of people for the last 47 years, Rice longer than that. We think we can do it better together. We know that we have to change. We want to do it our way to best serve our communities and our region. Thanks.
Thank you. Council questions? Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Followed by Plowman.
Mike, can we assume that you've contacted other partners that CentraCare has partnered with, other cities, and spoken to those hospitals? Have you...
We... I would answer it this way, Councilmember Christensen. We talk to partners and other communities, you know, all the time. We have had conversations historically over the years with other communities around us that have been longstanding partners, that typically refer patients to us here in Wilmer. So at this point, we've had what I would call more casual conversations, but I think this kind of a development can put us in a better position to work even more closely with outlying communities that have been partners of ours over the years as well.
Specifically, I mean, partners of CentraCare. I mean, Wilmer isn't the only hospital that they want to partner with.
Yep.
There's several others, and have you spoken to those hospitals to see how it went?
Yes.
And if it's working well?
Yes, we have. I would say to every community, it's... Every community is unique in and of itself. Every alignment, if you will, is unique in and of itself. Every medical community has its own unique characteristics, but yes, we certainly have talked to other communities about the benefits of further alignment and stronger partnerships. I think, as Dr. Smith referenced with healthcare today, and our board has, over the years, spent a lot of time on strategic planning, looking at really what's coming in the future, what's changed in the past, how can we best position our organization for the future. And certainly, healthcare is very, changing very rapidly. It's evolving all the time, and there's no question that changes down the road that speak to how we're reimbursed, how we're paid for services, and how we can be best positioned ourselves to deliver on the needs of the community are all things that we are certainly planning for, thinking about, and we don't necessarily, we can't control what goes on in Washington from a public policy standpoint, but we certainly are impacted, given the amount of government payers and patients that we serve, Medicare, Medicaid, and so forth. We're certainly heavily impacted by what's gonna be changing at the federal level with CMS, as well as commercial payers. And it really speaks to... The changes really speak to having a more integrated local delivery system and best positioning ourselves to work together. And so, in this case, with Rice and ACMC Health aspiring to come together at the local level, we think that's really positive. We think it creates a tremendous opportunity for our future. Again, we think we're better together than continuing to remain independent of one another.
And then finally, the... There are not many municipal hospitals left in the state of Minnesota. You maybe know how many there are, but I understand Wilmer is the largest municipal hospital left in the state of Minnesota.
We're the largest city-owned, I believe. There...
Yep.
The numbers of government-owned hospitals, and certainly in the state of Minnesota, but across the country, are certainly continuing to... Those numbers are continuing to go down, that is correct.
They're going the same path that you're attempting to go, basically, either privatized or partnering with a larger hospital.
Well, I think in various respects, for various reasons, and again, every community has its own unique characteristics, the trend and where things are going, again, there are less, there are less government-owned hospitals today than certainly there were five or 10 years ago.
Thank you, and I agree with you that healthcare is ever-changing, and we don't know what's gonna happen next month.
Councilmember Plowman, followed by Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you to the board members that are here tonight. You alluded to a couple things that I have, just statements and maybe a generalized question about. Number one, being the focus on patient quality care, and with that, I see consolidation, strategic partnership, et cetera. I see that as being beneficial when we're talking, going down this avenue. The other major point you hit on was cost-effectiveness, and I think maybe that's the pivotal role of all this, especially within the healthcare industry as of late, is the economics behind healthcare, especially quality healthcare. One, from an economic standpoint, could make the argument that local competition fosters increased quality at lower cost. Do you see that as something that's maybe changed over time, whereas now, instead of looking at that competition locally, we're looking to be competitive regionally? And will that, I mean, is there a cost-effect analysis, so to speak? Is that something that can be done or looked at in terms of competing regionally versus competing against each other on a local level, so to speak?
Mayor Calvin, Councilmember Plowman, I'll try to take a, I'll try to take a crack at answering your question. A couple things. First is, I would say, our goal, and our board would certainly validate this, our goal is this is about community. It's about healthcare in our community. That's first and foremost what we're aspiring to enhance and improve for our future. Certainly, figuring out ways that we can better, together at the local level, enhance our local delivery system and provide high-quality care, but good access to that care at the local level is certainly a part of that. I think your question regarding competition and how that improves quality or improves things for the patient, we've seen trends in healthcare to where, you know, I think at the local level, avoiding duplication of services in today's day and age is really a big part of also what we're trying to do in an effort to continue to provide that high quality and access to care, and take care of the volume of patients that there are in our community, and do it in an effective way. So we're trying to also reduce, you know, duplication of care and certainly the amount of capital it costs to invest in technology and all of what it takes to provide that care for our community and patients is part and parcel to the plan and our future where we go as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Better together, I think that's important. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for being here and to support us here, but better together, I agree with that. And I'm hoping that when you're formulating your plan, we've got the Nurses Association here, they spoke earlier to us, they should be a part of this, I believe. They're very professional, they're very knowledgeable, and I think they can bring a lot to the table to enhance the discussion and the enthusiasm for this project. So I hope, I'm hoping that this is a better together, including all the professionals that work at our hospital. Is that going to happen?
Yes, Mayor Calvin, Councilmember Alvarado, certainly the support of our staff, our staff are a very critical part of our local healthcare delivery system. Our staff at Rice have been critical to our success for many years and will be critical for our future. Dr. Smith would reaffirm that the staff at ACMC Health have played an instrumental role in the clinic doing what it does for the region in west central Minnesota as well. So we very much believe in providing for an enhanced delivery system that we think will be beneficial for our staff as well. What we're, again, we're trying to do is to enhance our healthcare system and access to services at the local level, not a system alignment where patients, the goal is for patients to go elsewhere, to a metropolitan environment, but to really provide care at the local level. And I think our three organizations, Rice, ACMC Health, and CentraCare, have the right philosophical, the same philosophical mindset of care being local, what can we do to enhance care locally? But how can we, in a more seamless way, transition patients from the local level to a higher level of care at a tertiary care facility, should the need arise? We've been successful in the past. We think we can do an even better job in the future if we are all in this together. As we look at enhancing our local healthcare delivery system, certainly, Wilmer has been a regional hub for many things, and healthcare is one of the many things that we've talked about wanting to do a better job of, and we think this strategy will help us to do that, as we're able to enhance care locally and provide more access to care. Certainly, our valued staff that are a part of that with local jobs and our local healthcare environment are front and center and part and parcel to that as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson, followed by Councilmember Schwantus.
Thank you. I was in attendance at your meeting on the 24th, and I was extremely impressed by your board, your unanimous decision to move forward. I think that we, everyone was in agreement about how important healthcare is to this community and the health of healthcare, keeping things local and doing our best to leverage and keep the services that we can here. And I just wanted to compliment your board and the staff on the compliments, the comments that were made that night. You know, the best decision at the best time, those types of things, and I think as you move forward with this letter of intent, doing, taking a look at what options we have and doing what's best for our community. And so I would say thank you for that.
Mayor Calvin and Councilmember Nelson, thank you for your support as our council member board liaison. For those comments, I would like to also certainly give credit to our board for their vision and leadership, but also for, as we talked about, a unanimous vote at the Rice Memorial Board. The ACMC Board and ACMC Health physicians also unanimously approved moving forward with their reciprocal letter of intent as well. So I think the value of us doing this together and our two organizations together is really an important thing for the community.
Councilmember Schwantus.
I think it's really important that the community have an opportunity to come together and voice their concerns. Healthcare is really near and dear to everyone, and I would like to see us create those opportunities that we can listen to what people have to say, ideas. You know, one question that was asked of me today is, will Blue Cross Blue Shield be accepted? Well, there are a lot of those kinds of questions. We probably don't know those answers at this point and how that affects us, but I'd really, I feel it's very important that we give people an opportunity to come together, really understand it, this is a process none of us have gone through before, and so collect ideas and comments and feedback, but also share as much information as possible with people.
Mayor Calvin, Councilmember Schwantus, I appreciate those comments. One thing I would say is, as we've planned over the years and our board has, again, looked at historical and future trends and where things are going, I think for all of us in healthcare, there's a fair degree of uncertainty. I do believe that our board certainly believes, and I believe Dr. Smith and ACMC Health believe as well, that status quo and continuing as we are independent of one another is not gonna be, create a viable strategy for our future. We believe change has to happen, and knowing that, we're very mindful of the fact that for all of us, change is not the most settling thing in the world. We do need to be mindful of that, and certainly getting input from our community and continuing to share what it is we're working to do and how we believe it's gonna enhance, enhance healthcare services for our community is what we will plan to do moving forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mike, for being here tonight. With all the letters I've seen, you know, in the last two months, nothing was said about employees, and I'm glad you talked about it there at the podium, because hospital is union, ACMC is not union, and I'm not sure what CentraCare is up there. But when will you know what kind of a pay system or benefits employees will get? Because let's face it, it's the employees that made Rice Hospital great. And we need to continue that, and they don't need to worry when they go home to beds, they, do I have a job tomorrow? You know, this is very important.
Mayor Calvin, Councilmember Fagerly, thanks for sharing the concern. I, certainly, we've got a lot more work to be done. As I shared, the Rice Board and in a reciprocal fashion, the ACMC Health physicians approved a higher-level letter of intent that really gives us the ability to move forward and further develop the details around how this regional health system would look. We certainly very much value our staff, and I know ACMC Health values their staff as well, and we're gonna continue to need good staff to care for our patients. And as I would share with our employees, we aren't gonna have less patients to take care of moving forward into the future. If anything, if we're able to further enhance our healthcare delivery system, we're likely gonna be taking care of more patients. So certainly, part of the challenge for our future that we've experienced in our local community is recruitment and retention, planning for succession for our future. Certainly, physicians and our medical staff are very important, but all of our staff are very important, clinical staff and all of our professional staff. So we really aspire to have an enhanced healthcare delivery system where we're in a better position to recruit and retain good people, because it's gonna take good people to care for our patients and for our community. So that's what we aspire to do, and your point's well-taken, because that's certainly one of many things that we certainly will be mindful of as we are looking at how we can provide very competitive with the market, you know, compensation benefits, all those types of things.
Thank you.
Well, I have a couple comments. First off, thank you for being here, and Dr. Smith, thank you for being here as well. I just want to thank you and your leadership teams, both at ACMC, the board, for looking at this opportunity to make sure that we continue to position ourselves in a favorable position, not only for today, but also into the future, as we provide local healthcare at the most local level that we can, and that's an important piece of what we do. We also need to make sure that what we do is a cost-effective model, and I think that in the conversations that we've had, you know, that's one of your goals as well, but that's not your driving force. Your driving force is quality patient care being delivered on a local level wherever that's possible. So I'm appreciative of that. A couple of things that were brought up during the first meeting that we had today was a conversation about Unity Hospital and how Unity Hospital Mercy had done some arrangements on their OB-GYNs. So that's something that you may want to look at and just investigate that. I followed that issue very closely when it actually happened, and as you know, those two hospitals are located very close to each other. So when that was brought up, I was very familiar with the incident that happened there and what happened, and of course, the parameters there are very dramatically different than the parameters here we have in Wilmer. And then also, the issue that got brought up was the PRA issue, and I know that you and I talked about that earlier today, and you've already looked into that, and you're working on that. So I want to commend you and your board, I want to commend the leadership at ACMC for their vision and putting this letter of intent together. This letter of intent is nothing more than coming to the table and talking, but most importantly, and additionally, I also want to thank...
A lot of capital it costs to invest in technology and all of what it takes to provide that care for our community and patients is part and parcel to the plan and in our future where we go as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Better together, I think that's important. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for being here and to support us here. But better together, I agree with that. And I'm hoping that when you're formulating your plan, we've got the Nurses Association here, they spoke earlier to us. They should be a part of this, I believe. They're very professional, they're very knowledgeable, and I think they can bring a lot to the table to enhance the discussion and the enthusiasm for this project. So I hope, I'm hoping that this is a better together, including all the professionals that work at our hospital. Is that going to happen?
Yes, Mayor Calvin, Councilmember Alvarado, certainly the support of our staff, our staff are a very critical part of our local healthcare delivery system. Our staff at Rice have been critical to our success for many years and will be critical for our future. Dr. Smith would reaffirm that the staff at ACMC Health have played an instrumental role in the clinic doing what it does for the region in west central Minnesota as well. So we very much believe in providing for an enhanced delivery system that we think will be beneficial for our staff as well. What we're, again, we're trying to do is to enhance our healthcare system and access to services at the local level, not a system alignment where patients, the goal is for patients to go elsewhere to a metropolitan environment, but to really provide care at the local level. And I think our three organizations, Rice, ACMC Health, and Center Care, have the right philosophical, the same philosophical mindset of care being local, what can we do to enhance care locally? But how can we, in a more seamless way, transition patients from the local level to a higher level of care at a tertiary care facility should the need arise? We've been successful in the past, we think we can do an even better job in the future if we are all in this together. As we look at enhancing our local healthcare delivery system, certainly Wilmer has been a regional hub for many things, and healthcare is one of the many things that we've talked about wanting to do a better job of, and we think this strategy will help us to do that, as we're able to enhance care locally and provide more access to care. Certainly, our valued staff that are a part of that with local jobs and our local healthcare environment are front and center and part and parcel to that as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson, followed by Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you. I was in attendance at your meeting on the 24th, and I was extremely impressed by your board, your unanimous decision to move forward. I think that we, everyone was in agreement about how important healthcare is to this community and the health of healthcare, keeping things local and doing our best to leverage and keep the services that we can here. And I just wanted to compliment your board and the staff on the compliments, the comments that were made that night. You know, the best decision at the best time, those types of things. And I think as you move forward with this letter of intent, doing, taking a look at what options we have and doing what's best for our community. And so I would say thank you for that.
Mayor Calvin and Councilmember Nelson, thank you for your support as our council member board liaison. For those comments, I would like to also certainly give credit to our board for their vision and leadership, but also for, as we talked about, a unanimous vote at the Rice Memorial Board. The ACMC Board and ACMC Health physicians also unanimously approved moving forward with their reciprocal letter of intent as well. So I think the value of us doing this together and our two organizations together is really an important thing for the community.
Councilmember Schwantes.
I think it's really important that the community have an opportunity to come together and voice their concerns. Healthcare is really near and dear to everyone, and I would like to see us create those opportunities, that we can listen to what people have to say, ideas. You know, one question that was asked of me today is, will Blue Cross Blue Shield be accepted? Well, there are a lot of those kinds of questions. We probably don't know those answers at this point and how that affects us, but I'd really, I feel it's very important that we give people an opportunity to come together, really understand it, this is a process none of us have gone through before, and so collect ideas and comments and feedback, but also share as much information as possible with people.
Mayor Calvin, Councilmember Schwantes, I appreciate those comments. One thing I would say is, as we've planned over the years and our board has, again, looked at historical and future trends and where things are going, I think for all of us in healthcare, there's a fair degree of uncertainty. I do believe that our board certainly believes, and I believe Dr. Smith and ACMC Health believe as well, that status quo and continuing as we are independent of one another is not going to be created viable strategy for our future. We believe change has to happen, and knowing that, we're very mindful of the fact that for all of us, change is not the most settling thing in the world. We do need to be mindful of that and certainly getting input from our community and continuing to share what it is we're working to do and how we believe it's going to enhance healthcare services for our community is what we will plan to do moving forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fagley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mike, for being here tonight. With all the letters I've seen, you know, in the last two months, nothing was said about employees, and I'm glad you talked about it there at the podium, because hospital is union, ACMC is not union, and I'm not sure what Center Care is up there. But when will you know what kind of a pay system or benefits employees will get? Because let's face it, it's the employees that made Rice Hospital great. And we need to continue that, and they don't need to worry when they go home to beds, they, do I have a job tomorrow? You know, this is very important.
Mayor Calvin, Councilmember Fagley, thanks for sharing the concern. Certainly, we've got a lot more work to be done. As I shared, the Rice Board and in a reciprocal fashion, the ACMC Health physicians approved a higher level letter of intent that really gives us the ability to move forward and further develop the details around how this regional health system would look. We certainly very much value our staff, and I know ACMC Health values their staff as well. And we're going to continue to need good staff to care for our patients. And as I would share with our employees, we aren't going to have less patients to take care of moving forward into the future. If anything, if we're able to further enhance our healthcare delivery system, we're likely going to be taking care of more patients. So certainly, part of the challenge for our future that we've experienced in our local community is recruitment and retention, planning for succession for our future. Certainly, physicians and our medical staff are very important, but all of our staff are very important, clinical staff and all of our professional staff. So we really aspire to have an enhanced healthcare delivery system where we're in a better position to recruit and retain good people, because it's going to take good people to care for our patients and for our community. So that's what we aspire to do, and your point's well taken, because that's certainly one of many things that we certainly will be mindful of as we are looking at how we can provide very competitive with the market, you know, compensation, benefits, all those types of things.
Thank you.
Well, I have a couple of comments. First off, thank you for being here, and Dr. Smith, thank you for being here as well. I just want to thank you and your leadership teams, both at ACMC, the board, for looking at this opportunity to make sure that we continue to position ourselves in a favorable position, not only for today, but also into the future, as we provide local healthcare at the most local level that we can, and that's an important piece of what we do. We also need to make sure that what we do is a cost-effective model, and I think that in the conversations that we've had, you know, that's one of your goals as well, but that's not your driving force. Your driving force is quality patient care being delivered on a local level wherever that's possible. So I'm appreciative of that. A couple of things that were brought up during the first meeting that we had today was a conversation about Unity Hospital and how Unity Hospital Mercy had done some arrangements on their OB-GYNs. So that's something that you may want to look at and just investigate that. I followed that issue very closely when it actually happened, and as you know, those two hospitals are located very close to each other. So when that was brought up, I was very familiar with the incident that happened there and what happened, and of course, the parameters there are very dramatically different than the parameters here we have in Wilmer. And then also, the issue that got brought up was the PRA issue, and I know that you and I talked about that earlier today, and you've already looked into that and you're working on that. So I want to commend you and your board, I want to commend the leadership at ACMC for their vision in putting this letter of intent together. This letter of intent is nothing more than coming to the table and talking. But most importantly, and additionally, I also want to thank our staff, because staff, you get the job done. You're there every day, you're there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and I know that in the conversations that I've had with the board at, with board members from Rice Hospital on the hospital board, you're, that's what you're concerned about too. And so you care about your staff, you care about what happens here in Wilmer, and keeping it local is what it's all about. So thank you very much for your leadership in bringing this to us. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the council for allowing us to share a few comments.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Motion, yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the Rice Hospital minutes of May 24th, 2017.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Rice Hospital minutes of May 24th. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we have public hearing, assessment hearing for 2017 improvements. Mr. Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. And again, I find myself sharing the podium, sharing the evening with royalty, so that makes me feel pretty good, so.
What does that say about you, right?
Yeah, it feels like I should not be standing up here at this moment. Tonight, we discuss the assessments for two projects that were approved recently, and so this is officially the assessment hearing, public hearing that's required by state statute. Maybe, there we go. So the purpose of the hearing is to, of course, review and explain the assessment cost of approved projects and to obtain input from interested parties concerning these assessments. This is not, as I mentioned, this is not the improvement hearing, but the assessment hearing, these projects have already been approved. So a quick rundown of the schedule. Improvement hearing was March 6th, if you'll recall. Assessment hearing, of course, is tonight. The intent would be to begin construction in June and July, June or July of this year, and to end construction, at least on those that are substantially complete by the 1st of November. It's a quick overview of, okay, that was really quick. All right, so read quickly. No, the, so the reconstruction and overlay assessments of what we've seen since 2007, so the last 11 years, 11 construction seasons. As you can see, they generally go up, there's a couple of little blips on the radar where the, we saw construction costs go down. We discussed that a little bit, or heard a little bit about some, what people have heard earlier tonight. But in general, they've trended up, as of costs of most everything have trended up. So as you can see in the projects we talk about tonight, for the reconstruct, reconstruction projects will be $80 a lineal foot, and the overlay projects would be $40 a lineal foot. Wow. Sorry about that. So the assessment schedule, this year, the reminder notice will go out in September. Somebody let me know if that advances without me paying attention, right? So the partial prepayments would be allowed without interest before October 31st, and full payment without interest, of course, by that time as well. Into next year, payments, including interest, are collected annually along with your property taxes, so the first half would be due in May and the second half in October. And prepayments are allowed of $1,500 or more before on November 15th of each year. Rundown of the projects, again, just as a reminder, 1701B project total was just shy of 1.5 million, and this includes engineering costs and contingencies, and that is 16th and 17th Street Southwest as well as 13th Avenue Southwest. And then 1703A is our overlay project, and that's Lakeland Drive, and again, including engineering and contingencies, that is just shy of a million dollars. It gives us a total, it gives us a total cost of almost 2.4 million, and this is total assessed projects, of which the property owners will be assessed less, just under 700,000, and the city share in those projects is 1.7 million. The, again, the reconstructing assessment total per foot, per lineal foot is $80, and for the overlay is 40. And that is my quick overview. If there are any questions, I would field them or turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, for public.
Okay, we'll take public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to, first item is the project number 1701B? Is anybody here that wishes to speak to, I'm sorry, 1701B as an employee? Does anybody wish to speak to that? So hearing, none. 1703A. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Fran Husong, and I reside at 809 Lakeland Drive Southeast here in Wilmer. Thank you, Mayor Calvin, and members of the council for hearing me tonight. I'm speaking regarding, regarding an objection to the proposed assessment for the project 1703A of the 2017 street and other improvements ordered by the city council. In particular, I'm speaking regarding the parcel of Valley View Block 1, Lot 1, and Outlet A. This is an empty lot on Lakeland Drive. It's just north of Olina and directly south of my residence, which is 809 Lakeland. I understand the need for road improvements and the taxes assessed to pay for them. However, I have two objections with the calculations for these special taxes. After receiving my notice in the mail of the proposed dollar value of the special assessment, I called the city office to find out what my options were. I was given information regarding my options, and they were to either pay the tax or address the city council. So here I am. I spent several hours at the county tax office researching similar properties in Wilmer. My findings were upsetting. I expressed my frustration to our mayor, and he suggested that I speak with the engineering department of the city. I called and I was able to speak with Mr. Christensen. My first objection was the inclusion of a 30-foot permanent city easement that was included as footage for the formula. My lot is 95 foot plus the lot of, an outlot of 15 foot for a total of 110 foot of frontage. But this includes a 30-foot drainage or ditch calculation, which is actually a concrete culvert that runs underground. It runs from the road from the front to the back of the property. Nothing can be built on this 30-foot wide strip from east to west. The city has it on record as an easement. Mr. Christensen clarified that if it were on file as a right-of-way, it would not be included, but since it is considered an easement, it is included. It would be up to the council to change the designation of a tax assessment for the easement. An easement is a property that the city uses, but the ownership stays with the property owner, whereas a right-of-way is property that the city uses, and then they purchase that property from the homeowner or property owner so that it then becomes the city property, although the previous owner still is responsible for the maintenance of mowing or snow removal or the like. The result was that after our conversation, I understood the fine line of ownership between an easement and a right-of-way. But I still feel that that 30-foot of easement inclusion in the assessment calculation is the city double-dipping at my expense. So I'm asking for the 30-foot of easement to be removed from the calculation. My second objection is that the value of the assessment does not increase the value of the lot. Minnesota State Statute Number 429.051 regarding the apportionment of cost states that the improvement may be assessed upon the property benefited by the improvement based upon the benefits received. The tax value of the lot is 16,300. The special assessment for the lot assigned to that is 4,400. After researching lot values, I've come to the understanding that the value of my lot was already extremely overstated. I paid $10,000 for that lot back when I bought it. I got it. I understand that the realtor wanted a value on it that would be fair as far as a marketing sale, but I also spoke with the city employee about the lot value, and at that time, I was told that the 16,300 was a normal cost, and that I just got a really good deal at paying 10 grand. Well, I trusted that person as someone who had authority and honesty, and I was mistaken. I understand that this is not a hearing on the value of the lot today, but I'm referencing it because the value of the assessment against that lot does not improve the value of the lot by the amount of the assessment. I researched 62 other properties in Wilmer that are empty lots of similar shape and size. These 62 properties had approximately $395,000 worth of value, making the average lot about $6,400. My lot is 16,300 with a special assessment of 4,400, which would make the value of that lot over $20,000, triple the average lot value. So let's look at percentages. The lot is 16-3, the proposed assessment is 4,400, that's approximately 27% increase. In contrast, the lot which has my house on it, the value is 115,200 with the assessed value of the proposed increase of $3,059, which is just less than a 3% increase. 27% of the assessment tax is too high. It's to the point of being a burden. In speaking with Mr. Christensen, I understand that I don't fall into the two categories which he has the authority to defer assessments, as I am not yet a senior citizen, and I do not fall under the agricultural deferment. I also understand that in the past, the city clerk would take some situations into special consideration. I'm told that this policy has changed, and that now it is up to the city council to make that decision for special consideration. So tonight, I'm here asking you to accept my rejection of the assessment on the empty lot next to my house, which is in the amount of $4,400.
Anybody else that wishes to speak to improvement project number 1403A as an Adam? Sean, can you, can you help us understand this, this issue that was brought up to us?
Sure, Mayor, members of the council. Fran and I talked today, and what's going on is there is an empty lot that she owns that is a buildable lot, and as it sits right now, the property, which there is no house on it, is only, is valued at $16,000. So she's exactly right, the percentage based on a lineal foot cost of $40 is significantly more than if there was a house on that lot. That being said, if there was a house on the lot, her percentage would be about the 3%, as it is for everybody, for a developed lot in that area. The easement she's talking about is a storm water easement for the storm line that goes, goes through what is an outlot that, per the plat. It's a 30-foot easement through there, and as you know, easements are defined differently than rightaways based on ownership, and she explained that very well. And so beyond that, I could ask, answer questions you have specifically to this particular situation, but what we've done, what we've done at the staff level is provide the lineal foot cost and applied that uniformly to the project.
Okay, and then to the question that she had in regards to the statute, I don't know if that's a Mr. Scott question, the value of the assessment versus the value of the lot?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the state statute does require that the amount of any assessment not exceed the amount of the benefit to the property from the project for which the assessment is being issued. What that means is the benefit is measured by the market value increase. So I think the property owner stated that correctly. Part of the city's role in developing the assessment role is to develop a list of assessments that reflect the best judgment of staff as to what the value is to the property benefiting from the project. So the assessment role should reflect staff's judgment of market value increase from the project being assessed. It would not be surprising, I think, for a vacant lot to experience a higher percentage market value increase than a lot with a house on it, but I don't know beyond that if there's been any consideration given to whether assessments on vacant lots should be treated any differently, considering the market value effects to that lot than lots that have houses on them, that defer to staff if they've looked at that.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, in the past and per policy, there is nothing written in there to, how to deal with a vacant lot. There are exceptions in there for corner lots, so that someone doesn't get charged on two streets if they have a corner lot, and there are also exceptions in there if you have an irregular shaped lot. So if yours is significantly larger than your neighbor's, too, I can't remember, 100 or 150 feet, maybe it's 200 feet either direction, then they take an average, and then your lineal footage is reduced. The dollar amount per, per assessment is not, but the lineal footage is reduced in those two situations. But that's all in, written in the policy, on the assessment policy per the city. I should also mention that the policy does state that the property owners would be charged 75% of the value of the bids that come in, and in doing the math on these particular projects, the property owners have been charged between, actually on this particular project, about 30%. So we have taken all of those things into consideration and, and reduced the rate of the assessment dollars per foot based on the market value of the properties.
Council, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sean, I understand the difference between a right-of-way and, what's it?
Easement.
The easement, excuse me. My mind went blank there, got a head cold. However, this easement is covering an underground drain?
That's correct.
Yep. Now, we've dealt with easements before, and it's my understanding that if you build or put a garden on that easement, or whatever you do to it, if the city needs to come in there and change, fix, or whatever, repair what's underground there, the homeowner has to pay for repairing or bringing back that structure or garden that's there, is that correct?
That's the way the easements are written, that's correct.
Then it would seem to me that the homeowner doesn't have any discretion there. I mean, I've got a lot of lots with a 45 easement, 45-foot easement across the back of it, and I'm running the same problem, and they want to value it, you know, for the whole footage of it. So I understand her concern, and I, I would agree with her that somehow that easement and a right-of-way, there really isn't a lot of difference there, because whatever you do on top of it, if the city has to come in and do something, plow something through there, they don't repair it, you, the owner, has to repair it, and did I just hear you say that you've already reduced it, so she's only at 30%?
That's correct, Mayor, Councilmember Christensen. That's about, and without doing the math again on the fly here, it's about 30%. In per state statutes, we have to assess 20% if we're going to assess.
Okay, so then you've already taken her concern into, you've concerned that, I mean, you're, you're listening to her, and you've lowered it because of her concern?
No, you're charging her the same thing you're charging everybody else.
Right, that's not entirely true. We've lowered it for everybody. Everybody's paying the same rate, because on a grand scale of the project, if we charge the full 75%, it would value, it would increase the price for everybody to the point of greater than market value increase.
Okay, so then she has a valid concern here, she wants it lowered, or from what I understand?
Yes.
She wants it lowered. What is your take on the easement versus a right-of-way? I mean, if I'm correct, they're almost the same.
There's very small differences. The biggest difference become, becomes ownership. So a right-of-way in, for a street, let's say, or is owned by the city. The city owns that right-of-way, we have to, we have responsibility within that right-of-way. An easement is owned by the property owner. So the property owner, for, per taxes, per lot size, and things of that nature, the property owner is responsible for that property, even if there is an easement. And as I explained to Fran, it's, you don't get full use of that, you get use of that property, gardens and everything else. It's a double-edged sword. The city doesn't necessarily like backyard easements. The city doesn't necessarily like backyard easements because you're going through people's, if you have to get in, which is occasionally, gardens and sheds and, you know, dog kennels and whatever else is, it might be in that easement because it's owned by the property owner.
So in reality, an easement is owned by the property owner but controlled by the city?
The utility under the easement is controlled by the city.
Okay. I think she has a valid concern.
Other questions for Sean? Otherwise, we'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council for action. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it to the council. What is your wishes on awarding the assessment role for project seventeen oh one B as in Boy? Can you go through those addresses or those projects again, throw them up on the screen for me? I don't have them in front of me. So it's Sixteenth Street Southwest, Seventeenth Street Southwest, and Thirteenth Avenue Southwest. And the project on Sixteenth Street Southwest is Thirteenth Avenue Southwest to Wilmer Avenue Southwest. The Seventeenth Street project is Fifteenth Avenue Southwest to Wilmer Avenue Southwest. The Thirteenth Avenue Southwest project is Seventeenth Street Southwest to Sixteenth Street Southwest. Counsel, what are your wishes?
I'll enter that resolution.
Second? Motion has been made and seconded to award project seventeen oh one B. Discussion. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, a required vote on this?
We need five affirmative votes.
An assessment hearing, isn't it three-quarters?
Mr. Mayor, there's a, I think it's a four-fifths majority that's required to order the improvements, but that's already taken place.
Right.
So you actually just need five votes to pass.
Okay.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Her, well, a lot that she's discussing is in the other property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
I'm going to abstain.
I need to abstain due to familiar relationship.
Not on this one, you're not, it's a different project.
Thank you.
This one you can vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Maskey?
Oops.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain.
And that resolution, yeah, that resolution passes. The next is adopting, awarding project number seventeen oh three A as an Adam.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Before you take a motion on project seventeen oh three A, you do need to pass upon the objection that was made specifically. So the required actions of the council would be to either overrule the objection and adopt the assessment as proposed, adjust that assessment in some way, which you'd have to do by motion, or you do have the ability to continue this if you determine you need more information before you decide what to do on that objection. You could continue this until the next meeting and ask staff to bring back additional information. Those are the three choices you have to deal with the objection that was made.
And so that objection gets dealt with prior to introducing the motion?
Correct.
Okay. So we do have an objection to awarding project number seventeen oh three A. The objection is to the, I'm assuming somebody wrote it down, objection to the assessed value at the forty dollars per linear foot to the amount of four thousand four hundred dollars. Am I stuff written down right?
Correct, Mr. Mayor. The essence of the objection was first that there was a thirty-foot city easement that should be excluded from the front-footage calculation, and second, just that in general, the value of the assessment exceeded the market value increase to the property resulting from the project.
Right. And the third was not, I mean, she did not have an objection to the value of the property because that's not what we're doing here?
That's correct. They were just talking about the amount of the assessment.
Okay. So do we have to take both of those separately?
No, no.
Okay. So then an objection to the thirty feet, and then there's an objection to the increased value of the lot after the assessment is applied. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson?
Just ask for further clarification. What do we need to do to, is it a problem if we ask for further research and for it to be brought back next meeting?
It's not a problem. You have authority under statute to bring it back to continue the hearing. I would recommend you to announce it to be continued until your next meeting on June nineteenth. Otherwise, your options are to deny the objection, approve the assessment as contained in the roll, or to modify the objection to a specific dollar figure.
So I guess, Councilmember Nelson, in the information that was presented to us, it wasn't lacking either from the presenter or from staff. Staff clearly understood what was being asked. The presenter clearly understood what they were presenting. There was no objection on either side, so there's been no objection from anybody as the material is presented. So what additional information would we need? I don't understand what that would be.
Just trying to figure out the correct procedure to move forward. If we have a recommendation from staff on the suggestion for what to do with that lot, that's, I guess, what I was looking for. My concern was, are we delaying the projects if we do not vote on the assessment tonight? That's my concern.
Mr. Christensen?
You just denied the request. Denied. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Nelson, absolutely, any furthering of the hearing or continuation of the hearing potentially delays the projects.
Can I ask one more question? If we deny the request tonight and approve the resolution, can we instruct staff to go back to come up with a suggestion for this piece of property?
By acting to deny the objection, you would be ratifying, you'd be approving the assessment as proposed. That would be final. And the property owner would have to, if the property owner continued to object, the property owner could appeal and start a district court proceeding. But I don't think there would be any opportunity to review this. I mean, the city can always recalculate or reassess if there's cause to do so, but my recommendation would be decide what you want to do tonight if you can. And again, you can either approve the assessment as proposed or instruct that a modification be made. That can be to a specific dollar figure. It can be to a specific manner of calculating it. For example, calculate it after removing the thirty-foot easement. Not a recommendation, just an example of something you could do tonight.
And then you could approve it with the understanding that staff is going to go and negotiate that. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Christensen, what was the minimum percentage that can be assessed, did you say? Was that twenty percent?
Councilmember Plowman, per total project, per statute, is twenty percent.
Okay. Can, I mean, does it have to be uniform, or can it vary in an instance like this?
So I should probably clarify a little bit. That is total project assessments. So the dollars, would you give me the next slide? So that six-hundred-ninety-three thousand would actually have to be in the four-hundred range or less to be less than twenty percent.
Ask?
Hold on one second.
Okay. Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
I believe she cited that in her research, there's sixty-two properties similar to this. So if we do this for one, are we talking about looking at sixty-two properties? I mean, is this something that we should be looking at from a policy, or?
I believe what she said is there were sixty-two empty lots in the city of Wilmer. It is what she said. She did not say that sixty-two have the same, okay, now I lost the word. What is it, Ron?
Easement?
Easement.
Easement.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, to make things simple, I'm going to, I'll make a motion that we reduce the cost of the assessment on that lot, the same percentage of what that easement is of the total lot.
Twelve hundred dollars.
Twelve hundred, you said?
Thirty feet times.
Thirty feet times forty would be twelve hundred dollars, reduced by twelve hundred dollars. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying the percentage of what that easement is of the entire lot. If that's the number, then I guess that would be it. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to reduce the assessed value on the lot by twelve hundred dollars. Discussion. I'm sorry, by the amount equivalent to removing the thirty feet. And staff, if somebody can figure that out for me so we can, I think I'm correct, aren't I? Mr. Christensen?
So let me throw another little thing in there for you. Council and Mayor Calvin, that thirty-foot easement actually spans both of her lots. So I believe, if you have a plat in front of me, ten feet of that easement.
Ten feet of that, I'm sorry, that thirty-foot easement actually spans both of her lots. So if I recall the plat correctly, ten feet of that easement is on her northern lot, and twenty feet of that easement is on her southern lot. It might be the other way around. Either way, that thirty-foot is not completely on this lot in question. Just to add to the confusion.
Councilmember Christensen, what was the intent of your motion?
To simply reduce the assessment on that empty lot by the percentage of whatever that easement is of that lot. Now, the other, if there's ten feet or twenty feet on her own lot, that's already a developed piece of property, and it's got a home on it, and it's worth more.
Right.
Where the empty lot is not. And we, as a council, need to consider that for all empty lots in Wilmer, as I mentioned a few weeks ago. It's, an empty lot, it may sit there empty for another ten years. You can't keep increasing the value, but it actually goes down. But we see it increased all the time. It's counterproductive to the city trying to build more, entice people to build more new homes than empty lots.
Sure. Thank you.
But anyway, the motion is to reduce that empty lot assessment by whatever percentage that easement is on. It's either ten feet or twenty feet, as Mr. Christensen explained to us, either one. And they can figure out the numbers later, but that's my motion.
Councilmember Nelson?
So I'm concerned that, I'm not opposed to reducing this. I just think there might be a right way to do this. I'm not sure we've come up with the right way to do this yet, especially if it's going to have ramifications for other lots. So I'm concerned, I was going to ask staff for their comment. I'd rather reject this and send it back for an appeal to find a equitable way to do this that makes sense for other lots also.
Mr. Peterson?
Like city engineer Christensen, I'd like to further complicate the matter by reminding the council that any time you have an easement that follows a side property line, the initial ten feet from each side property line is a no-build setback area anyways, and there's never been adjustments made for any of those ten-foot areas. So what is the area you're truly addressing if you've got a thirty-foot easement that spans two properties? All of a sudden, you're dealing with ten feet that's outside of the setback area. Otherwise, it's unbuildable anyways.
I don't think that was addressed, but thank you. Councilmember Osmus?
I was going along the same thought vein as Councilmember Nelson, as far as what precedence are we setting if there is, let's say, sixty-two other vacant lots? And are we just dealing with the easement? Are all easements on all lots? I mean, what precedence are we setting?
Councilmember, I'm sorry, City Attorney Scott?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, from my perspective, just as a city attorney who's had to defend appeals on special assessments before, this, to me, is a question about the scope of the easement, not the fact that the lot is vacant. You know, the analogy has been made to a right-of-way, city-owned right-of-way. They're both easements. So in most cases, the city right-of-way is also an easement. It's just that the scope of it is much broader, and it leaves little use to the private property owner. Technically, I think title to the property is still owned in most cases by the property owner. In this case, it's the same. It's just that I think the property owner has a little more enjoyment to the surface of the property. So the, I guess, the concern for the staff when you're concerned about the precedent you're setting, I'd recommend you think about if there are other similar easements in town and how the city handles assessments of lots with easements similar to the one on this particular lot.
Councilmember Osmus?
I saw the issue as more of the issue of the value of the lot, in that if it's twenty-seven percent that the increase went up, for the vacant lot, it didn't increase the value to twenty thousand. It started at sixteen thousand. It's going to get assessed four thousand, four hundred. It's now not worth twenty thousand. Not so much the easement. That would, you know, that is something we could take into consideration as far as lowering that part, but that, to me, is the more precedence issue of all other properties that have easements. I think this is more about a vacant lot and increasing it by twenty-seven percent to that increased value.
Okay. We have a motion on the table. The motion on the table states that staff is to determine the width of that and then apply the forty-dollar calculation to the width of that portion of the lot that is affected by... Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe the council has done this in the past. Sometimes the owners of a lot of lots give them back to the state, and the state tries to sell them. And we will lower or reduce or take away the assessments to that particular lot so that whoever can sell it for eighty-five hundred dollars, the state or the county. So this has been done before. And my motion basically is appeasing the homeowner, the lot owner, and it's also showing that we allow some discretion in upping the value of that property to twenty thousand dollars when it's really not worth that twenty thousand dollars. So my motion stands, and I think we should vote on it.
Councilmember Nelson?
I heard objection from both the staff and our city attorney about setting a precedence here. I'm not sure that we've come up with the correct solution to assist this homeowner with this piece of property. I'm not opposed to doing that, but I don't think that this is the correct way to do it.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question is, how big is the lot? Anyone know? And is it a buildable lot?
He said that.
Yes, it's a buildable lot.
Councilmember Fagerly, yes, it's a buildable lot.
Okay. You just can't build on ten feet of it, but that's the setback in a way?
Actually, it is closer to the thirty feet by the time you get to setback in the easement that you can't build. But the buildable area is roughly the same as others at ninety-five feet.
So ten feet, setback in ten feet is the culvert underneath?
Yep. That's correct.
And then how much more room is there to the south, then?
It appears per, I called up a plat on that lot. She's got ninety-five feet, the same as other lots in that.
Total?
Yep.
Okay. And that's on a separate parcel number, then?
I guess I don't know that. That includes lot one and outlot A in that plat.
Okay. Because she has the house, and then it's the garage, and then it's the vacant lot.
Correct. And that vacant lot includes outlot A and lot one if...
Okay. But, Brandy John Lakeland Drive. So she needs Lakeland Drive to get to her garage and to her property.
That's correct.
So she could sell that lot, or she could merge it into the lot where the improvements are.
Or build an additional house, yes.
Yeah. So a vacant lot like that with assessments paid is worth twenty thousand easy. It's on Lakeland Drive. There's lots of people that would want to be there because it's close to the Y, it's close to the school. So I don't think the valuation is out of line.
Ready to vote? All in favor of the motion as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye. Abstain.
What did you get?
Roll call.
I'm opposed.
I got that it passed.
I'm with Audrey.
So I got it.
I have, one abstain, I have two nays, and the rest ayes.
Okay. The motion passes. Unless you want to, do you want a roll call?
I'd like a roll call.
Roll call. Or should we call it division? Is that right, Mr. Plowman? Councilmember Plowman?
Roll call. Councilwoman Schwantus?
Abstain.
Alvarado?
Nay.
Osmus?
Nay.
Nay.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Nay.
Christensen?
Aye.
Three ayes, three nays, one abstain.
So I will vote in favor of the motion. Next, we have awarding Project seventeen-oh-three A as an Adam.
I'll enter that resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to award Project seventeen-oh-three A, Adam. Discussion. Mr. Scott, do we have to make that, that notice of the motion that passed for that adjustment here, or does that not need to be done?
That's not needed, that's now incorporated into the rule that you're voting to approve.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Can you restate that, the motion again, please?
You're awarding the Project seventeen-oh-three A, so you're awarding the total project for Lakeland Drive.
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantus?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution. Councilmember Schwantus, you'd said previously you wanted abstain from that, did you wanna vote for this one at this time?
I apologize, I should abstain. I was thinking it didn't impact me on a large scale, but if there's any question, I'll abstain.
Okay, I'm only bringing that up because on the first motion, you said you wanted to, so, okay.
So we have six ayes, one abstain.
Correct. And then, I forgot to adopt the assessment rule. Is there a...
Motion to adopt the assessment rule.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the assessment rule. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantus?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have a...
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Christensen.
For the benefit of the Wilmerfest people, can we do the hearings afterwards, or is it by law we have to have them at that time?
By law, we have to, by law, we have to do the hearings first. I was thinking the same thing. You know, Jim, you always pick a bad meeting to come to. You know, if you're asking for money, we keep you to the end. I mean, it's like, yeah, but, but the public hearings have to be first.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, I apologize to you guys. I mean, I knew this was gonna go long, but, you know, when, when Mr. Holland told me we had five public hearings, and we had Wilmerfest, I went, "Oh, no!" But anyways, I think the rest of them should go fairly quickly, I believe, so. Mr. Peterson.
The council, issue before you tonight for this public hearing is the required public hearing for the GM Development Business Subsidy Agreement. The final step in the sale of property to GM Development for their new trucking terminal is to conduct the public hearing to recognize the land write-down as a business subsidy. Staff has negotiated, and the council has approved the sale of property. Property being sold is Lot One Block One, Wilmer Industrial Park, Fourth Edition. And we're ready to close on the property. However, prior to doing so, we have to recognize the land write-down as a business subsidy. Recommendation of staff is that the council adopt the resolution approving the business subsidy agreement and authorize the mayor and ex, and administrator to execute that document. The only remaining legal issue in this process is the execution of the business subsidy agreement. We're still working with the company to resolve one site issue, but we would like the ability to move forward with the company now and close on the sale. And in order to do that, we need that resolution from the council for the land write-down and the business subsidy agreement.
Anybody here who wishes to speak to the business subsidy agreement for the land purchase for this project? CNN hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it before the council. Counsel, what do you wish to do?
I'll move to adopt the resolution approving the business subsidy agreement and authorizing the mayor and administrator to execute.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to run this past Planning and Development. I've had a couple people approach me, questioning why we would enter into a business subsidy agreement with a startup company. I don't understand this business to be a startup company. I understand this, the trucking operation that will be utilizing this facility as Magnum Trucking, which my family's personal manufacturing firm, and along with other regional manufacturing firms, utilize Magnum. They are not a startup, correct?
GM Development is the company that will be owning the real estate and leasing it to Magnum, very typical arrangement. So you're right, Magnum is a longstanding company, and has a number of other terminals in the state of Minnesota, so they are definitely not a startup.
Perfect, thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Abstain.
Schwantus?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain.
That resolution passes. Next is an ordinance for Isco Inc., Bueller, Bueller Versatile Land Sale. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, the city charter requires that, prior to the city disposing of any real estate, that it conduct a public hearing and conduct the disposition by virtue of an ordinance. City staff has been working with Bueller Versatile for some time regarding the sale of property in the industrial park. Bueller Versatile has a parent company by the name of Isco, so the actual sale will be to Isco on behalf of Bueller Versatile. This is property directly south of their manufacturing facility in the Wilmer Industrial Park. The acquisition of the property price was settled at three-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-seven dollars and fifty cents. They proposed to create a minimum of thirty-one new positions over the next three years, and under the terms of the city's write-down policy, this would give them a credit of three-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars towards a purchase if those jobs are created and maintained. A necessary step in this process, if the land sale is approved, is for the business subsidy agreement to be approved that will document the responsibilities of the company with respect to the land write-down and employee creation. At this point, it's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt the ordinance for the sale of property to Isco Inc., which is the parent company for Bueller Versatile Inc. And then we can deal with the land write-down and the business subsidy at the next hearing.
Counsel, I'm sorry, is anybody from the public that wishes to speak to the issue? CNN hearing none, I'll bring it to the, to the council table. Counsel?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance for the sale of the property to Isco Inc.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Abstain.
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays, one abstain.
That resolution passes. Next is a business subsidy agreement for Isco. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, as an extension of the last action, the final step in transferring property to Isco on behalf of Bueller Versatile would be to conduct the public hearing to recognize the land write-down as a business subsidy agreement. State of Minnesota statutes require that the public hearing be conducted. Anytime there is a business subsidy granted of the extent that the city is proposing to grant to Bueller Versatile, and again, the business subsidy in this particular case is the land write-down that will be applied towards the purchase price of their property. Biggest issue we have at this point is moving to meet the schedule of Bueller Versatile, is they'd like to do significant hiring, they really wanna ramp up their production, and have those jobs credited towards the land write-down. And the only legal issue that really remains to be resolved prior to the closing is the execution of the business subsidy agreement. So it's a recommendation of staff, again, that the council adopt the resolution approving the business subsidy agreement and authorizing the mayor and administrator to execute that document.
Okay, it's a public hearing, is anybody here that wishes to speak to the issue? CNN hearing none, I'll bring it to the council table. Counsel, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, or to approve the resolution approving the business subsidy agreement and authorizing the mayor and administrator to execute.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Abstain.
Schwantus?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays, one abstain.
And that resolution passes. Next is an ordinance to rezon land from Hague to General Business for FRE Holdings LLC. Bruce.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, this is the last hearing, Jim, thank you. This, this ordinance was introduced at the previous council meeting, and what it would do is rezone the property that the Hawkinson's are selling to FRE Holdings of Cold Spring. It's to be the site of a new Schweeter's Chevrolet car dealership. And the comprehensive plan for the city of Wilmer shows this as future commercial property, and that its transfer from agricultural land to a commercial zoning is a logical extension of growth for the city of Wilmer. So staff recommends that the ordinance be adopted, assigned a number, and published.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We gotta close the public hearing. They're trying to get you on faster, Jim. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak to this issue? CNN hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Then a motion made and seconded, discussion.
Needs to be adopted, ordinance, signed a number, and published. The motion.
Correct. Any other comments? All those, I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantus?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution passes, that motion passes. Next, we have a presentation of Wilmerfest by Mr. James Miller. According to my agenda, it is currently seven-oh-six. You can assume us whatever time you wish. So, but thank you for being here, thank you for all the good work you do.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, no apologies necessary, I'm a night owl. It's these three that probably have better things to do than hanging out with us, but I will first apologize for my disheveled look again. This year is, once again, we're coming off of the United Way Brember Bank Golf Tournament, so I was out at the golf course suffering for the last nine hours, so just gonna say that right now. We are really raring to go for our seventy-second celebration of our fine city. Wilmerfest twenty-seventeen is scheduled underway. In front of you, you have a copy of our, our schedule of events, and it is packed. Once again, we have tried to cram in as many things as possible for this year's event, as we have for a number of years. I just wanna highlight a few of the things, then I'm gonna hand it over to our current ambassadors to tell you a little bit about their opportunities to get out and represent the city of Wilmer, really across the state. They've gone international, they went to Canada this year, again, to Winnipeg in the Festival de Voyageur. Had a great opportunity to, to meet and greet a lot of different people, but really to tell the story of Wilmer. Again, just some of the highlights quickly from, from our scheduled events. I, I wanna make a note, first of all, of just the number of businesses and organizations that are involved in supporting this. This is not a small feat, by any means. We, we really couldn't do this without the support, obviously, of the city of Wilmer, the staff from the city of Wilmer, the Wilmer Police Department, the Kansas County Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, as well as our sponsors like Genio Turkey Store, and the list just goes on and on. It does take a incredible amount of effort from our community to come together to put this festival together. We have a board of, what, nine members right now, strong, that, that do as much as we can, but it really does take a lot of people, so we do appreciate all the help. We are kicking off again this year with our flag-raising ceremony at Selvick Park, something that we brought back two years ago at the behest of former Mayor Dick Hoagland. It's definitely a fun way to kick things off, but kind of an honor to, to history and the past Wilmerfest and Coffee Fest celebrations. We will crown our senior ambassadors once again at the Wilmer Community Center on Wednesday, June twenty-first at two P.M. The Prudence Band Concert, Pine Ice Cream Social, heading out to Robins Island this year, with the improvements happening over at Rice Park. The J.C.'s, once again, kicking off their block party on Thursday evening, that kinda is the highlight of the night. Lots of different fun events, lots of community groups doing both performances and demonstrations as part of that. It'll also be the first time that many of our candidates this year, and we do have ten fine candidates vying for the crowned positions this year, that they'll actually be under the watchful eyes of our judges. They do usually sneak in the night of the block party to kinda see and, and spend some time and get to know those girls. They do it without really telling them that they're there, so it's an opportunity for them to really see them in true fashion. Friday night, once again, we are, we are partnering up with the Wilmer Stingers for a baseball game. There are tickets in front of you to come to and be part of that night. Tickets are free. Sell those tickets, so they are a free ticket for, so you can come and be part of that celebration at Bill Totten Stadium. Saturday, of course, is our busiest day. We kick things off with the Wilmer Fire Department Pancake Feed. Rice Memorial has the Foot Lake Four Walk Run. I'll, once again, advise you not to eat pancakes then run. Not always the best plan. The Grand Day Parade at ten-thirty. We're very excited this year to also be teaming up with the Destination Playground for their grand opening. That'll happen at one o'clock at Robins Island, just ahead of our Genio Turkey Store Kids Carnival. We're bringing back the Inflatables once again this year. It's been a very fun and successful piece of Wilmerfest the last number of years. And then, all the fun that goes on is part of the beach party, and that is kind of the culmination and capping of the evening after we've crowned our new ambassadors. At WAC, we head out to Robins Island for a Little Crow Ski Show, as well as a beach party concert with the White Keys. They're returning this year. They were a lot of fun. Last year, we invited them back once again. That's kind of a capping of the events, and what I would encourage you, or ask of you, is to try to be at things as you can, and let us know that you're there so we can make an opportunity to acknowledge your support of Wilmerfest, but also an acknowledgement of your presence at, at some of our events where we can. With that, I'll step away, I'll stick around for questions, as I'll let Queen Carley and Princess Hannah and Princess Alicia stand up and talk a little bit about their experiences as our ambassadors.
Welcome. We're very fortunate to have you with us today, and I'm sure we're gonna hear about some pretty exciting times, so you can go ahead with your presentation.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I'm Alicia Howard, the two thousand seventeen Wilmerfest Aqua Princess.
And hello, everyone. I'm Hannah Erickson, and I am the two thousand seventeen Wilmerfest International Princess.
Hi, everyone. I'm Carly Darwin. I'm the two thousand seventeen Wilmerfest Queen of Festivals, and, yeah, we're gonna kick it off. Our slide shows up here. So, um, oh, so we are gonna start out with our candidate week.
Um, so, we did various volunteering events through our candidate week that many of the next year, or it's, can, these year, next, this year's candidates are gonna be doing most of the same stuff. So we started off, um, the Chamber Connection, which we did actually this past Saturday, where we talked with...
Friday.
Friday, with many of the local businesses. And then the first day, we went over to KWM Broadcasting, and we were on the air and talked and introduced ourselves. Then we went over to, to Your Health and got some delicious yummy shakes. Then, that same day, we went over to the food shelf and volunteered handing out, helping handing out some food to the locals. And then also that same day, we went to the Rice Care Memorial Hospital and played some games with some of the residents.
And then when we go to our Stingers game, we have a lot of visiting royalty come, and they experience like what we have to offer throughout that.
Oh, that was a nursing home picture?
Yep. Okay. So our first parade was Spicer. And as we went through this parade, we had the exchanging of the gloves, which is a really important thing. It's the previous royalty handing down their gloves to us, well, new gloves, not really theirs.
[laughing]
But, that middle picture was taken by Fernando Alvarado.
And I guess this parade was really fun, 'cause we saw a lot of familiar faces. So, yeah, we knew a lot of people.
We also have this thing where, wherever we go, we like to take a picture of the sign, so you'll see a lot of those probably as we go on.
The next weekend, we went to Claire City for their Prairie Fest, and that was the first weekend we got our shoes, so...
They don't look like that anymore, I just wanna let you guys know. They're dirtier now.
Um, but yeah, we had the parade, started with that, and then they had a rib fest, so we went and ate ribs, which was delicious, and we had to help vote for which one was the best. I left all those pictures because our face got really messy during that.
We got to wear bibs, like garbage bibs almost, like plastic.
Yeah, they were like aprons.
Yeah, they were cute. And then, the parade, or not the parade, the park picture at the bottom, we went around, there was a park during the rib fest that we went around and like interacted with the kids of their community, and then, tho, those three girls were the cutest girls. They, yeah, we pushed them, and, yeah, it was really cute.
All right, so then our next event was Bruton.
At this parade, we had, went to the Belgium Waffle Feed and got to interact with some of the locals, especially that little girl. I feel like the little girls love looking up to us and saying, "Oh, they're princess, they got a crown." I feel like the little girls love looking up to us and saying, "Oh, they're princess, they got a crown." And I think they're, were the coolest things ever, so I think that was one of those valuable things I learned this year is being a role model, to not, especially those little girls.
We also went to New London, which is, what are we doing? We had their parade. We also, our, one of the perks of being in Wilmerfest is you get food, and we had a lot of cheese curds that day. And doughnuts and a bunch of other stuff.
Yeah, and we went on Inflatables, and then that picture of the slide also, so we got to do those things too.
It's hard in a skirt, I just want to let you know.
Yeah.
We next went to Hopkins, which was one of our bigger parades. It was massive. There was people in balconies above us waving, so we'd wave down at the people down here, and then we'd have to go up to them. It was really, really fun. All right.
The next parade we went to is Aquatania. I'd say this is probably my personal favorite because it was at nighttime, and we got, this is the first time we actually got to decorate our float and like light it up so everybody could see us. But we started off the day going to meet the candidates, where we got to support past Queen of Festivals Miranda. She was vying to be the Queen of the Lakes in the Aquatania.
That bottom picture is us in the torchlight parade, which is their at-night parade. And that's us putting our lipstick on, you know, gotta look good.
All right, so our next event was at the Twins game. It was Sparkle Night. So there were a bunch of different girls from different communities all over Minnesota.
We did make signs, but did not get on the,
The big screen.
Big screen or get circled by Bert, so.
Then the next parade we went to was Olivia for their Corn Capital Days. We started the day by going to their park, and they had drunk driving awareness, so you gotta put on goggles and try, what do you be like if you're driving drunk, so just to kind of raise awareness, not drive drunk. We were very bad at it and hit almost every,
You two were bad at it. I did well. There was like four of them, and they asked me like, "Have you done this before?" And I was like, "No." Right over a foot. Oh, next we went to, next we went to Glenwood, which was Waterama. This was probably one of our favorite parades. It was really, James took us there. It was fun.
You sound surprised.
All right, so we started off by taking a picture by the sign, which is where when you come in there is that overlook. And then while we were there, there's some little girls that were also taking a picture by the overlook, and then their eyes just like lit up once they saw us and their crowns, and they just wanted to talk to us. We interacted with them for a little bit and took a picture. And then we went over to luncheon, where we got to meet so many different royalty from other communities. I think Glenwood had probably like the most compared next to like Aquatania or Anoka for communities that were there to interact with. And then next we had a parade, which was huge. It was a very hot day that day. I remember, I remember one float actually started on fire. So like the fire trucks like went through at the beginning of the parade, and then they had to run back all the way to the end and help the float that was on fire. So that was interesting. And then afterwards, they had a par thing, and we got to eat a bunch of different food, like our favorite, the cheese curds.
We had lemonade.
Lemonade.
All kinds of good stuff.
And then we got to go on the lake with the rest of the ambassadors and see Lake Minnewaska.
And then our next parade, we actually had two parades in one day, so it was Pennock, and then later that day, we went to Lake Lillian.
Their festivals were called Fun Days in August, and you should explain the Sasquatch picture.
Well, okay, so growing up, my little sisters always thought I had big feet, so my nickname was Bigfoot. So and then Lake Lillian, they had some metal cutouts of Bigfoot or Sasquatch, so obviously we had to take a picture.
And the girls at the bottom are the Candy Ohio County Dairy Princesses and Queens, so of course you gotta show them too.
And then we went to the Candy Ohio County Fair and helped give out corn.
And then we got,
We went on a bunch of rides. And yeah, so we, we did our serving corn first, which was really, really enjoyable, and it was fun to like see all the community members that came out to enjoy the corn and the, wasn't there a band playing as well? Or a carryo?
Yeah.
They had a talent. Yeah, talent show.
Yep.
And then, yeah, as we said previously, we went on a bunch of rides.
And then we visited all of the horse barns, the cows, pigs. Next, we went to Belgrade. We took some fun pictures out by the giant crow that they have in their community. Unfortunately, during that parade, it started to rain, so we have umbrellas for when this happens. Carly's got hers open right away.
But ours were stuck.
Yeah, mine throughout the entire parade, I thought the pictures kind of cut off, but I was sitting there with like half clothes, just sitting there trying to cover the rain.
Your grandpa.
My grandpa tried opening mine for me. He saw I was struggling from the crowd, so he came up and was like following the float, trying to open it.
He was like running with the float. It was beautiful.
He kind of got it.
I was not at Winstead, so these two have to talk about it.
All right, so then we went to Winstead, and at this community, I remember there was not a lot of ambassadors that we've previously have met. So I thought it was interesting getting to meet all these other girls that we haven't got to get to know yet. We started off at their firehouse where we ate pancakes. And then we went through the parade, and as we were waiting, there is a bunch, there's in the bottom right, left corner, there's a little girl, one of the other ambassadors. And something that's unique to us ambassadors is we wear gloves, and she thought that was so cool, so we let her try them on. And then after the parade, we met so many little girls that, of course, their eyes lit up and wanted to get a picture with the princesses and talk to us. So I thought that was really fun.
All right, so next is the Grove City Mud Stomp. So this was the first year that Grove City had their mud stomp. So it was kind of like this volleyball area.
Court.
But they put a ton of water in it, so then all of us ambassadors just went out there and got dirty.
We won medals for that because we were going hard.
And then also the Grove City, they wanted to raise awareness for the food shelves, so to enter it, you had to bring a food shelf item or $5 to donate to the food shelf.
Again, we won medals for that. Next, we went to Raymond, and the left is the newest royalty for Raymond. And then, again, the sign. And James also was at this one, and we had a nice photo shoot for this.
Oh, yeah, by the phone.
All right, and then in September, we had the Celebrate Art, Celebrate Coffee event, where we helped build or create art projects with little kids. And I believe the theme was like Dory or the Fibonacci series. Yeah, fine, yeah. I thought those were really fun because who doesn't like to do art and create stuff?
Yeah, and interact with the kids.
Anoka Halloween Festival. This was a really, really big parade, but it was also, wet.
It was also raining.
It was raining, but it was also really cool because you got to, we got to decorate our float. And the volcano did actually erupt, and it changed colors, so we were the best. No, I'm just kidding. And then, yeah, then they had their coronation, and theirs is one of the largest coronations. They had like 50-plus girls.
Candidates.
Yeah, for candidates. And then, yeah.
So then our next event was the Holidays Parade, which was here in Wilmer.
Okay, for, for the Holidays event, we also got to decorate our float, and we had lights that Alicia's stepdad did, and they went to music, so that was pretty cool. Also through this, we got to go to nursing homes and sing carols to people. We,
We also made them stockings.
Yep.
So we colored stockings and then handed them, handed them throughout.
But there was a twist to the stockings because the other royalty also helped us make it, and then we gave them out like during our caroling.
In January, Hannah and I went to the Timberwolves' Sparkle Night, so like the Twins game, the Timberwolves were hosting their Sparkle Night, so we ate a bunch of food again. And we got to, we got there early, and we got to see the players shoot around beforehand, which I thought was pretty cool because I'm a Timberwolves fan. And then we got to go out onto the court afterwards, and this was a really good game because I believe it went into overtime.
Yeah.
And the Timberwolves won, so. Pretty cool. And then we howled and cheered for our T-Wolves.
South Dakota.
So this was our first weekend-long event in Ever, Everne? Yeah, Everne, Everne, South Dakota.
This was, yeah, our first out-of-Minnesota event, and this was really cool because we got to go on a scavenger hunt through their town, and,
Called Frostopoly.
Yep, Frostopoly. It was like a Monopoly version of their town, and like you competed against four other teams, and you went and got all kinds of things throughout the town, and you got points for it. We didn't win. You weren't on my team.
No, I got third place.
I lost. But, yeah, and then up in the left corner, the upper-left corner, is the newest queen and the previous queen. And then the bottom left is all the,
Winter Carnival.
Yeah, Winter Carnival and other ambassadors that were there.
And then our other weekend-long event was Winnipeg, which was my personal favorite.
We went international, and in the middle top is the Festival de Voyageur, like royalty. But they're supposed to represent the heritage they had with like the settlers coming in and the trade and trade of furs. And our left bottom corner is syrup popsicles, which were interesting. They laid these syrups on, or like they put syrup on snow, and then when it was cold, you put your popsicle on it and you rolled it, and then you ate it like a popsicle. It was,
It was very good.
It was good, but yeah, it was interesting to try. And then our friends, the Vulcans in the bottom right. Oh, they also had ice sculptures there, which were really, really, really unique to their community because every, like, people from around the world made these ice sculptures. It was just really sad because it was so hot that day that they all started melting. But we did get some pictures before.
Then, just recently, we had the Meet the Candidates Day, where we went out and helped to build the playgrounds.
For Meet the Candidates Day, we basically had all the girls come together with their parents, and we told them like what to expect with Wilmerfest, how enjoyable and fun it is, that they are representing the community, and like just they had, they got their schedule that day and their dresses and everything.
And then the following day after Meet the Candidates, we had the Sundberg Parade. And it was cold.
And it rained.
So we didn't wear our dresses. We just wore some outfits we had.
All right, and then, like I said, on Friday, we just had our Chamber Connection, where we greeted a lot of the business leaders, and the candidates were also there. And they, this was the first time they had to do their introductions to the public, which was pretty cool, just seeing them do their public speaking for the first time. They did a really good job, so.
Yeah, it was also really fun to watch them interact with community members that are, you know, more prestigious within the community. They have their businesses, or they represent a business, and it was really interesting to see them all interact with them and how well they did with that. We're not gonna talk about that last bottom picture. So we have some upcoming events. So we have Painesville this Wednesday. It's an evening parade with a carnival. And then on the 8th, we have Build a Burger at Cashwise from 10:30 to 1:30, so if you want to come out for that. And then, I don't know what I just did, sorry. Oh, no. How do I do this?
He'll fix it for you in the back. He'll take care of it.
Well, he's taking care of it. In the back. All right.
Go to the, go to the Build a Burger one. There you go.
And then on Saturday, we are gonna help out with the Feed My Serving Children by begging up rice and that, and we're gonna go to the Candy Ohio Parade. On the following weekend, we have our last event, where we'll be in the Moda Video Community staying for the weekend. And then the 19th through the 25th is Wilmerfest week, where we'll do a bunch of other events through the community, volunteering, and on Saturday, giving up our crowns and to the next reigning ambassadors.
We keep joking that we're not giving them up.
Throughout the year, I feel like we've grown so much as individuals, and we've learned so much. I feel like one of the most important things that we've learned was volunteering in your community and the importance of community.
Being a role model also is really important with these positions because we do go to several places. There are several young women and young children that look up to us, boys and girls. And they do really see us as like something they want to be someday, someone that they want to strive to be and like achieve with goals and everything.
Connecting with others, so obviously the three of us have built a really strong relationship being with each other a lot. But other than that, we have built strong relationships with other communities ambassadors. We've really gotten to know other girls throughout the state well.
With the connecting with others too, we do really network. For Wilmer, we try to show our strengths as well as taking in the other community's strengths. And then, we are also in a leadership position because we do have crowns on. People see that we're like an icon, a statement. And it is, we do really try hard to show that we do, I don't know where I'm going.
I think we try hardest to represent Wilmer to the best of our abilities.
Yep. Confidence, we, okay, confidence and public speaking go together because there is no way before Candidate Week last year, I would have ever thought that I would be,
Standing up here.
Standing up here, public speaking. For all of our events we go to, we do talk, and we do have to give like a little speech or talk to them about what Wilmer has to offer, and it is really awesome to, that we've learned this throughout this experience.
And then these are just a few of the people that we've met throughout our year. A lot of the reigning royalty and bringing in their community's next year's ambassadors.
These are the last cute pictures.
Thank you for having us and for your support of Wilmerfest. We appreciate this opportunity and for the opportunity to continue for next year's and for the years after that, so thank you.
Thank you.
You guys can stay up there. We'll probably have some questions for you. You can stay up there, so. Council, any comments? Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel like we just attended that Wilmer's got talent and you guys won.
Exactly.
You know, I've been here many, many years, and I've seen a lot of Wilmerfest queens come through here, and you three seem to have had the most fun, enjoyed each other. You're like the Three Mouseketeers, and I congratulate you. I'm sure that enthusiasm is gonna go on to the next tween candidates that come before us too. But thank you so much for representing us. You guys are entertaining.
Yeah, we really do appreciate this opportunity that we have gotten, and we do appreciate, appreciate all of your guys' support and the community's support, so.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Well, I think you have to do a shout-out to your parents. Listening to you talk about the floats and how they prepared them and what they've gone through to make sure you guys get to where you go, so.
Oh, yeah, our parents have been super involved, so it's been really nice.
They do help us set up the floats. My mom does my hair, Alicia's hair, Hannah's hair. Your sister does our hair, and yeah, they're awesome, so thanks, Mom and Dad.
On behalf of the mayor's office, I want to also thank you for being the ambassadors for Wilmer. As you travel to all these different areas, you're who people see as Wilmer, and that's what brings those people back to Wilmer and gives them a positive experience. So you've learned a lot through this process, but the city of Wilmer has gained so much by having you guys there representing us. And so thank you from the bottom of our heart for all you've done. I know I've been involved in a few of the Wilmerfest activities, but you guys are at all of them. I mean, not just some of them, you're at all of them. And then plus there's other stuff, so thank you so much for all that you've done for our community, so I really do appreciate that, so thank you. Did you have some additional comments, James? You can, but I hope that, I hope Damon's gonna get to talk too, because, you know, this is a big year for Damon, so.
He's actually gonna yell and scream at me next because that's one of the things I want to talk about. I mentioned that our board is all volunteers, Mayor Kelvin and councilmembers. This is actually Damon's last year on our board. He'll be stepping down, not after Wilmerfest week like he thinks, but at the end of our, our year here in September, he will be stepping down off the board after, I believe, nine years on the board. Damon does a lot of stuff for our board. He is our parade master. If you've ever organized a parade that has about 120 floats, some music, some not music, some with animals, some with nonanimals, but all the different things and then trying to organize all. things and then trying to organize all of that. Uh, he's been very, um, adamant to getting bands in our parade. How many do we have this year? Four bands. Uh, and, and again, it's an important part of, of that whole process and Damon has been very, uh, very amazing at doing that. So, I, I wanna mention the fact that he will be stepping down from the board and, uh, we are sad to see him go, uh, but that, that's an important part of change is that we have other people come in and step into leadership roles within our community. Uh, but it, it goes without being said, Damon has been a, a huge part of this board, so I just wanna acknowledge that. You mentioned their parents, uh, Councilmember Elverado. Uh, their parents have been phenomenal. Uh, we've been very blessed to have these three young women. Uh, they are on when people aren't watching. And I think that's, uh, a true testament to, uh, them as leaders, uh, the confidence that they have. Uh, they mentioned Glenn with the young girls that walked up, uh, to us. We were taking pictures at the overlook and these were the same three people when they were talking to those girls as they were at any other time. Um, they don't turn it on when someone shows up. They're always that way, kind, conscientious, um, except for the moment when the girls were walking away and they all said, "We like the one in the white the best." Kind of what Carly did was cheer and-
The humility when they went away.
Um, but the, the reality is that they're this way throughout the process and that's something that we really try to instill in our candidates. I, I mentioned we have 10 new candidates this year. Uh, one of the first things that we, we talk to them about is being themselves, being authentic. Um, you, you can fake it only so long. People are gonna catch you. We're very pleased to have, um, former Wilmer Fest queen and Aquatennial Queen Laura Schwartz come back to, uh, talk to them about that whole experience that she had, uh, going obviously through Wilmer Fest and then through Aquatennial and the experience that she, uh, the leadership roles, the opportunity for confidence in public speaking that she was able to be part of, uh, and what that changed in her, but also how you can do that and be intentional about it, but yet still be authentic. And, and so we, we hope we instill that in our young people as they go through this process of Wilmer Fest. So, we thank you again for your support and, uh, and for your time tonight.
Thank you. Now, Damon, I'm just wondering, are you quitting after this year so you don't have to go through all the political floats in 2018? Good, good. Thank you for your service. And James, thank you and the entire board for all you do, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it immensely. So, thank you so much. Now, the meeting is just starting, so you guys can stick around if you want, so.
Let's score them up.
We've got, we've got, we've got a lot of good information to go over yet, so. Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it.
Yeah, good job.
Next, we have, uh, Wilmer City Council Open Forum. Um, first on the agenda is Fran. Okay, thank you. Next is Jean Larson. Ms. Larson, now, uh, how we do this is that we, you have three minutes to, to present. It'll be up on the, uh, screen here, so you know where your time is.
Okay.
And just understand that at the end, there's a buzzer and, um, so the last time, Mike McGuire had told me, "I put a buzzer on there. Is that okay, Marv?" And I said, "Yeah, that's fine, no problem." I didn't realize it sounds like a fire alarm. So, I, I hope we've toned it down just a little bit, but, um, so you will hear a buzzer at the end if you get to your three minutes. So, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Jean Larson and I have been an employee and RN at Rice Hospital for forty, over forty years. Um, the hospital is very important to me. It has been giving me many great opportunities. Um, the nurses are very concerned about the reports that the city council has been involved with the affiliations talks with Centricare. One of our greatest concerns as RNs and as other employees of the hospital is of course what you heard as our pension, para. If the hospital becomes privatized, we would no longer be members of para. We have worked many years. We have employees that have been working at Rice 10, 20, 30, 40 years. They have depended on this pension to be able to retire with a peace of mind and dignity. Another area of concern is, um, I feel that Rice and the community has been very progressive in bringing new technology to this community and, um, bringing the latest care, high-quality of care to our patients. I have been in many different scenarios in the operating room where I never thought I would be doing those type of surgeries. We've gone from open to laparoscopic and the latest robotic. Um, just to learn the new technologies is invigorating and very self-rewarding. I would hope that with this alliance, with the affiliation with Centricare, we would not lose these opportunities as employees at Rice. Another big concern is, again, if, what about the low-volume, low-census areas within the hospital? Would we lose these services for our community? Like they allude to the pediatric department, which has a very low census at times. These are highly skilled individuals that are taken care of, these people, and I would not like them, would wish they would not lose this opportunity. We have strived over the years as a group RNs and, um, with our meetings to bring forth very extensive contract that protects and gives the best quality of care to our patients. And I would ask, um, the council to highly advocate, advocate for, um, extending these existing contracts to the nurses and keep us involved in the decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Johanna Reller. Johanna happens to be my niece, for those of you that don't know that, so.
Hello.
Hi, Jo.
Um, uh, my name is Jo Reller and I'm a registered nurse. I work in the emergency room at Rice. Um, and I would like to thank everybody here, um, for serving on our council and putting forth your time for representing us. I really appreciate that. It's not a job I would ever be able to do, um, and so I appreciate that. Um, I would like to, um, ask you guys to consider, um, making sure that all of our community, um, not just our staff, but our community are considered, um, in this alliance. Um, you know, whether that's making things, um, this open to the public and talking with them, um, but I just wanna make sure that we're advocating for our, um, community and our patients as well as our staff, um, and our nurses. Uh, like, um, Jean said, you know, our concern is losing some of our areas, um, that are lower census. I think that this could be a huge, um, opportunity for Rice, this affiliation, um, to help us recruit physicians and there are so many other possibilities, um, that Centricare could help bring to us and that's really exciting. Um, I guess I would, my concern is that we would become, uh, like a feeder hospital for Centricare, sending patients there rather than keeping them here in our community, uh, by our loved ones. Um, I'm, I guess I'm just concerned how this would impact our patient care. Um, we wanna continue to provide that high quality of patient care, um, that our patients need and deserve. Um, and so also to be aware of our contracts, um, that the city council considers that as a provision, um, when looking at the affiliation. But I think that this could be a very positive thing for our community. Um, it could really bring a lot of things and help keep our patients here locally rather than sending them, uh, out of the city, um, to keep our own, you know, our neighbors and our families here, and that's really important to me. Um, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we had for Open Forum. We're gonna go ahead and go in recess. We're in recess.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. By not having time to look it over thoroughly.
We'll go back into session. Next on the agenda is council retreat notes. Mr. Holland.
Mayor and council, we've included a copy from Chad Weinstein, the leader of the retreat that day. He took notes and basically we've got four or five pages here of notes. In particular, I want to point out where it says "action items." I'm going to take a look at those. Some of those action items are actually for the council to achieve and some of them are for staff. But I will go through those and when I do my weekly report on Friday, I will address any of those items that are left undone. We wanted to include, the mayor and I, to include these notes. In particular, there was a couple of council members that were unable to attend so that they could understand what the discussion was, what the priorities were determined to be. And if you have any questions or concerns, to contact me or the mayor. Also, that we're trying to set a follow-up date in July on a Saturday so that everyone can attend, hopefully. And we're looking at, you know, the second or third week, weekend in July. We'll probably have a similar location at the bank that we did in May. So with that, mayor, I just wanted to, you know, distribute that and make sure all the council members got a copy of that. Did you want to discuss any items that, from that retreat, mayor?
Yes, I'd like to just point out to the public what some of the items were. One of the things that came up at the retreat is that we need to start addressing the issue with our facilities. And the Civic Center project out there, the ice plant, is something that we really need to work on, along with three additional projects, which are city offices, the community center, and the auditorium. And what the council would like to do is bring that back for additional conversations. Of course, we have immediate concern with the Civic Center, with the refrigeration and the overall facilities upgrade. And staff is working on preparing a report for us on that and will receive that. The other thing is, is that stormwater has been a big issue for our community. And the council had some synergies being built around how can we start looking at stormwater and actually doing something other than the stuff that we do through the street reconstructions projects and stuff like that. So there were some synergies that were built around that in regards to an area in southwestern Wilmer and also the western interceptor. And so the city needs to look at that. And then the third priority they had was that of the parks. And that with Robins Island and the projects out there with the $606,000 legacy grant, and I'm assuming that got passed, I don't know, Steve, did that get passed with the budget? So that $606,000 will be coming to us. And so the council will need to determine whether or not they apply the $250,000 that will be needed for that match. And then additionally, it was stated that doing the work at Rice Park, we need to look at as a council completing that project in its totality. And then part of that is the Miller Park, which is the, which is the tennis courts and the playground that Councilmember Fagerly had brought up concerns about. And so once we get done with that, then we need to get back and we need to regroup and say, what are our priorities and which direction are we heading? And one of the things that was talked about and that so that the council's aware of it, for the two members that were not present, is that the issue of the concession stand out at the Swanson Field was a priority because we were going to have the VFW tournament here. Well, we're not having as big of an attendance there and it's not going to be done in time for the VFW. So I've kind of told staff that, you know, yes, it was in the budget, but, you know, probably want to look at reprioritizing those dollars and using them in other areas within the city.
Mayor, can I interrupt you just on that one note? Because I've been asked by staff and it's kind of pertinent to what you're talking about, and that is out at Swanson Field, the concession. Those bids are going to be open on June 7th. So that's two days from now.
Correct.
So the question that I'm getting from staff is, they need to know, are we not going to move forward with the concession stand, any phase of that? Or should we just shut down, all work on that concession stand? Because we all agree it's not going to be built in time, as you said, this year. But having said that, there are still, you know, plans to phase in different things out there. So is there a consensus among the council for us to stop? Because we've got bids coming in on this in two days.
Right. Well, what I heard and what I'm reporting on was what happened at that meeting. And again, this was not adopted. I'm giving this report for the benefit of the two council members that were not present. And so council didn't take any official action on stopping that project. There was no official action, it was just conversations on that. And so I think that that needs, those conversations need to continue and that, thus the reason for the prioritization, again, having the follow-up, which hopefully we can have all council members at. But, so there has been no official position taken by the council because that would have to happen at a council meeting. If the council wishes to speak about that tonight, they certainly are more than, more than, you know, I'm willing to entertain that conversation. But, but, so as you look through the plans, you see some changes in how things originally were laid out in this year's budget, based on the priorities on how they were presented to us, or presented to me when I presented the budget to you, on how things had to happen. And those timelines aren't being met, which then somewhat changes some strategies. So, so that's kind of the comments that I had, that I wanted to talk about. You will see the action items that Mr. Holland did reference and some of those things that we had requested. We talked at, this afternoon, and he'll try getting those updated to us as a council so that we have those information we requested at that retreat. So if the council wishes to discuss it greater, we certainly can do that at this point. If they want to discuss the issue of the concession stand prior to the bids coming in, we can certainly do that. But council, that's up to you, how you want to proceed with that. Councilmember Fagerly.
Can you just go over it again? When is the VFW tournament? And if we get the bids in and they're favorable, how long will it take for them to complete it? And if they can't finish, what kind of construction mess is it going to be when the tournament is there?
Mr. Brizan Dine.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, Councilmember Fagerly. We do not believe that, given the amount of work that will take place and where we are in the calendar, that that project will be done by the state tournament. The state tournament's somewhere on the 9th of August. The work itself would be isolated into that area of where it's going to go off the roadway on the first base side of Orange. I don't necessarily believe the impact of any construction would be that great. But that being said, it's not going to be ready for that tournament. And that was the intent of, our timeline was to try to have it ready for that August tournament. So the urgency of it is, has probably left us at this time because I don't see any way that that project's going to be completed by the time that's ready.
So the existing concession stand can still be used in the bathrooms? It'll be okay?
I believe what they'll look to do is to bring in some temporary structure that will help them with concessions. The existing concession stand is used for storage for public works. The bathrooms are still available. We'll probably bring in some porta-potties to deal with the handicap accessibility and having them on-site, more than going across the roadway for that tournament. So I think we'll make some adoptions to accommodate the four to six baseball games that will be held at Orange for that tournament.
Only four or six?
Yes, that's what we believe it will be now. It was led to believe that that might be a little bit greater this year, but we do believe that it's going to be four to six games in that three, four-day period because most of them will take place at Baker, no?
Okay. And just as soon forget it then, put that money elsewhere.
I certainly will speak again. You know, the reason it was a priority, and I explained this to council when I presented it, was that we were going to get that tournament. And that's why I said it was a priority of mine. It's not a priority of mine anymore. And, you know, we've got good parks, we've got a park plan, we've got to start following the park plan. But we've got other needs too, folks. We've sat around this table many times saying that we have other needs within our community. And we need to start addressing some of the critical infrastructures that we have, including facilities. And, you know, was this about $360,000, if I remember right?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, the budget was $365,000, of which we have extended. I think near $35,000 or $40,000 of it for the consulting services, for both architectural and the consulting engineering services, for the two vendors that are on that project. Which isn't wasted resources because that is still the plan that we want to follow once that work is done, whether it's this year or five years from now.
Exactly. Councilmember Elverado, followed by Nelson.
I know some baseball parents and they keep emphasizing the amount of traffic that comes into town on these tournaments and they're, they're a little frustrated and disappointed that we don't have the facilities to accommodate these kind of tournaments. And I'm just sharing that frustration.
Councilmember Nelson.
At the community ed and rec meeting, we had a discussion about this also. And I would just say, as close as we are to getting the bids, I think we should look at the bids. But I also heard that there were maybe some other reasons to rethink if that is the right location, how the road might affect and those types of things. So I would like to see it come back with some additional information that was still being gathered as of the community ed and rec meeting. So if it's something that we need to address next meeting, I think that would be fine. I'm not opposed to looking at whether this should still be a priority or not. But I think we've done the homework. I think we need to look at what we have and then make the decision.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Mr. Mayor, I, this is where, if we had clear plans, we would not be wasting staff's time. Because we're sending such a mixed message. We've just told them, this is not a priority. And now we're asking them to go further just for us to say, this is not a priority. And I would think that's got to be very frustrating for staff. We need to decide what, where we're going and how we're getting there so that we do not waste time and money.
I'll make a motion to eliminate the concession stand at Swanson Field at this time.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I second it to have staff discontinue their work on the concession stand at Swanson Field. Discussion, Councilmember Nelson.
I just want to clarify. The direction was given and the plans were made. It's not happening in the timeframe that it was supposed to. So there is a frustration, I think, at the fact that it's not happening. I am concerned about our credibility of putting things out for bid and not even taking the time to review the bid with that. I'm not opposed to looking at the end result, but I think maybe the question is, why isn't it happening in the timeframe that it was supposed to? Because that was the direction that was clearly given by the council and by the staff. And I think we need to find a way to make sure that that tournament is successful without it, since it was something that was promised to them three years ago. And so it certainly, I think, is a frustration, but if the bids are coming in tomorrow, or the next day, two days, you know, a lot of people have put work into getting those bids and I think it would merit the review of them before the decision. Plus, there are other issues out there that I think we should be discussing for the long term that we haven't heard about either.
Additional conversation, Councilmember Christensen. I'm sorry.
Sean is getting your attention.
Mr. Christensen.
My recommendation would be that if there's a, the slightest chance, or a good chance even, that you're going to kill this project, that you do it now. I think the last thing you want to do to contractors is say, go ahead and bid it so we can review your numbers and we're not going to do the project anyway. I think that's the last thing you want to do with the, with the contractors, expecting those bids come in Wednesday. So my recommendation would be, if you're going to kill this project, do it tonight.
Motion on the table from Councilmember Fagerly, seconded by Councilmember Christensen, to direct staff to discontinue working on the current project at the concession stand for Swanson Field. In favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Those oppose, same sign. Real call.
I am in favor of canceling the project.
Aye.
Aye.
Elverado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
No.
Christensen.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays.
The motion does pass. So other than that, that was the updates for the council retreat. Again, this emphasizes the importance of the council to get together, to develop this plan that we've been talking about since last year and driving that plan. And I think that our community is expecting us to do that. I think our community has a desire for us to get that out there. And we're getting there, folks. We're doing really good work. It's just that it's slow to get there because it takes us a while to all get on the same page. So, thank you very much. Next is consideration of support of a workforce housing project with Commonwealth Development. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council. Staff, along with a local housing group, has been working with Commonwealth Development on a housing project, which is proposed to be four stories and 47 units. The project is to be named 15th Street Flats, as the proposed site is on 15th Street Southeast. Commonwealth has been looking at sites in Wilmer and working on a housing project for quite some time. And the Vision 2040 Housing Group, that represents numerous community members with an interest in housing, has been involved in project discussions. Commonwealth does have a purchase agreement for the property and has approached the city about the zoning change and a conditional use permit required for the land use approval. At this time, Commonwealth as the developer wishes to move forward with an application to the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency for tax credits. Other financing that's being requested is tax increment financing from the city, the county, and the school district. As mentioned previously, the primary issues that involve the city will be financial issues. The developer, in the application for tax credits, requires a resolution that expresses general support for the workforce housing project. Other support that's being requested in a resolution is a preliminary approval for tax increment financing. Financial impact of the project is positive. It will create much-needed workforce housing and will provide a very unique project for the city of Wilmer. The city at this point has three general alternatives. One is to express support for the project, including the use of tax increment financing. The second option would be to not support the project at all. And the third option is to support the project without local financial involvement. It's the recommendation of staff that the council adopt the resolution expressing general support for the Commonwealth Housing Project, including preliminary approval for a 15-year tax increment financing district. It's important to note that a housing district under Minnesota statutes can run for 25 years, but we are recommending that only a 15-year district be implemented for this particular project. Local partners in this whole process have been the EDC, the Vision 2040 Group, and the county HRA. And there are representatives from those organizations here tonight, as well as Aaron Anderson from Commonwealth Development, that are prepared to also offer some comments on this project. And I would like to have them have the opportunity to speak as well, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Aaron, if you'd like to address this, please.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Aaron Backman, EDC Executive Director. I am pleased that we have a housing developer represented tonight by Aaron Anderson from Commonwealth Development, which is based in Wisconsin, that is interested in investing over $9 million in affordable housing for working families in this community. Just to be clear, this is not a city-owned or county-owned or publicly-owned housing. This is a privately-owned rental housing project. This is a privately-owned rental housing project that will be owned and operated by Commonwealth Development for at least thirty years. They have a strong interest in making sure that it is well-operated and well-maintained, as they have a number of projects in seven other states. In discussions with the housing developer and the Vision Twenty Forty Housing Subcommittee, it is the general consensus that the site on Fifteenth Street off Lakeland Drive is an optimum location for this development. To be competitive in St. Paul, there needs to be a five percent local match. The proposed TIF provides approximately 5.1 percent in local match. In addition to the forty-seven affordable units and the over nine million dollars in investment and tax base generated by this project, Fifteenth Street Flats will also offer a housing product that is currently not available for families in this region. It's a very unique product, I believe, three-bedroom units with two levels in a multifamily building setting. So that's kind of interesting. Sixteen of the seventeen units will be in that vein. So, thank you for considering the project. At this time, what I'd like to do is invite Aaron Anderson. Come on up.
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers.
You can pull that down a little bit. There you go. Looked like you were standing on your tiptoes there.
A little bit, stretching my legs, maybe. I'm sure you all wish you were, too. Thanks again for having me, and thank you for the introduction, Aaron. A lot of work has been committed to this project over the last year, between the EDA and Vision Twenty Forty and the HRA. There's been a lot of effort put into this development, and we're really excited to be here. I gave a presentation about a month ago about our company, so I'm going to really quickly breeze through this, because, in the interest of time, we are a developer, as Aaron mentioned, that has a presence in about seven states at this point. We have over thirty developments, and we focus on affordable housing, workforce housing, town home style mid-rise, historic adaptive reuse, and also preservation of existing affordable I'm kind of going quickly through these pictures, because I don't want to take too much time tonight, but these are just some examples of our developments. And that brings us to the site today that we're here to talk about, which is located, this is a nice aerial photograph that was recently taken. There's a star where our site is located there, and it's located off of Lakeland Drive on Fifteenth Street Southeast, right behind the Pizza Ranch and across from Dana Heights, which is a fantastic location, in our opinion. It's really conveniently located next to community amenities, which is one of the reasons we selected this site. We're looking at a four-story mid-rise, which means it's an elevator building with surface parking, for a total of forty-seven units. And, as Aaron mentioned, we have kind of a unique design concept on the three-bedroom units, which is intended to enhance the livability of the units, which is that they are two-story, three-bedroom units, to kind of provide a little bit more of a separation, you know, with large families with children, for noise reasons, et cetera. We are needing all the existing setback requirements. We do need to rezone the site. After our application is approved by the state for funding, we'll come back and request rezoning approval, along with a conditional use permit related to the number of units that we're proposing on the site. This is a rendering that we have generated for the concept. It reflects pretty closely what we have in the neighborhood pitch roof design, neutral tones, and some natural stone Our mixed-income development will consist of affordable units, and a small percentage of the units, five of the units, will be for formerly homeless families and individuals with support services through the United Community Action Partnership Group. They're going to be providing case management for those individuals as they transition into permanent housing. And we also will have, on top of those five dedicated for the homeless, we have another five for disabled individuals. Our rents range from two-hundred-eighty dollars to seven-hundred-seventy-one dollars. And we are generating our funding, which adds up to around nine-point-one million dollars, through primarily equity that's generated through the low-income housing tax credit program, which is the application that's being submitted by June fifteenth, a first mortgage, and deferred developer fee, and an energy efficiency rebate. Our budget's driven on current construction pricing, recently completed projects, and understanding Minnesota Housing Finance Agency's scoring to be successful, including cost containment, green communities criteria, and intermediary, which is non-construction hard cost limitations. We plan on submitting the application June fifteenth, and then we'll find out, they announce the awards, they take quite a while to review the applications, but they announce them at the end of October, which means it's likely to be a spring start for next year. And our construction process for this type of product would probably be around eleven months. So we'd open then, spring of twenty nineteen. We've taken into account questions that often come up with affordable housing. We do recognize that in this neighborhood, there is some existing affordable housing across the street, but some of the questions that come up are around property value, which we have found that generally has either a neutral or positive impact. Resident profiles and crime, we address through stringent background checks. Commonwealth and the HRA have a really high commitment to providing quality living environments for people to call home, so we really feel strongly that the quality of product needs to stand the test of time. And scale and density in relation to the neighborhood, which we believe that the scale of this project fits in well with the neighborhood. I'm not going to go through all the green communities, but it's intended that this is going to be a sustainable development. The HRA is involved as property manager, so they're providing input on design and operating budget, and they're also providing rental assistance for the five units that I mentioned that are for homeless families. And, as mentioned previously, the items on the agenda today include a city council resolution of support that we're requesting. We're not requesting the rezoning yet, that's to come at a future date, but we are requesting a preliminary tax increment financing approval, as well as for you to review the planned community development plan that has been put together related to housing. I thank you for your time, and welcome any questions.
Jill, were you wishing to speak tonight or not?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Council, what are your wishes here? Are you, any questions that you have? Do you want to make a motion, get it on the floor first, or do you want to have the discussion first?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Most made and seconded to a resolution expressing general support for the Commonwealth Housing Project, including preliminary approval of a fifteen-year tax increment financing district. Discussion. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Affordable housing means you can afford housing, basically. And this is another example of how we, the community, treat large developers that come in from out of town, and then give them tax increment financing and other special requests from the city, versus what we do for local developers, or should I say? I'm being one of...I don't speak against this, I'm going to abstain on it, but I just wanted to make those two points clear. Affordable housing is housing you cannot afford. And we need to, some of this reason for the requesting this development is due to the low wage that we have in Wilmer, and we need to, we need to look at raising that wage. Third thing, you build it and they will come. That's pretty much what I wanted to state.
Councilmember, Councilmember Fagerly, followed by Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a good location, like I said before, and there will be able to have some senior citizens living in there.
Right. It's non-age restricted, so it could be all, any age.
Because that could help open up for housing to move the senior citizens
Sure.
to these units, and then their homes come available for upstart families or whatever.
Yep.
My only concern is, still have a problem with tapping fees, and I know you're not talking about that right now. I'm just planting the seed, and I'm not willing to give up tapping fees when it comes to the future, so.
Okay.
But I'm in support of it.
Okay.
Councilmember Plowman.
I'm going to be abstaining from voting on this project, as I have personal acquaintances who are also interested in developing projects.
Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Kelvin, Councilmember Fagerly, the consideration for the waiving of tapping fees is no longer an issue. That is not being requested. The developer will be paying the tapping fees.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Kelvin. I will speak in support of it. I have been a part of the housing group, but I think you've worked very hard to look for a fit for this community, and have looked at what the housing needs are, and so I'm pleased with the proposal that you're bringing forward, and also our support of it. I know that the housing study shows that we have needs in a lot of areas, and I think, a lot of areas, and I think this is one fit, a very good fit, to work on parts of those, and so I thank you for this, and, as I stated, I will be supporting it.
Thanks.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question for Bruce. Is this, since this TIF district, they have to meet the but-for test? But for the fact they're not, they wouldn't get this, it wouldn't be built?
Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, Councilmember Christensen, all TIF districts have to meet that test. It's not a very stringent test. It can be shown with the pro forma, with the financial workup, that without the use of TIF, it will not be a, in, it will, they will not be able to offer the units at the rents that are affordable and would qualify them for the tax credit program. So, the but-for test never assumes that the developer is not going to make a profit.
Mm-hmm.
It's understood that a developer is entitled to a market rate of return on their project, and if it takes TIF to do that, it can still meet the but-for test.
And who decides that? I mean, who, who decides?
Ultimately, that will be the city council to determine that.
Okay, and then one other quick question is, do we know where the low-income housing tax credits are, who bought them, or where they're coming from?
You're asking who's buying them?
Yeah.
Okay.
East Coast people, or?
It's, it's either a direct investor, so it could be a Wells Fargo or a US Bank, or it could be what's called a syndicator, a syndication fund, which is a pool of investments that could range from insurance companies to medical hospitals. There's a huge range of investors.
So they aren't, you haven't sold the tax credits yet, then?
No, we don't even have them yet.
Okay, let's write October is when they...
Yeah.
I understand. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, you know, thank you for bringing this project to us. Aaron, is there anything else that you wish to add before we vote? Okay.
Thanks.
Yep. This takes a simple majority. We've got two councilmembers who say they're abstaining from the vote. Ron, you also serve on the HRA, right? Your V is under the HRA?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, okay. So we have two councilmembers that announce they're going to abstain, so this is a simple roll call, I'm sorry, a simple motion with a majority vote, and it can pass with, we don't need a major majority. All those in favor of the motion as presented, which is to, oh, I lost it. All those in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Abstain.
Mr. Mayor, I, recommendation, just because it was a resolution, to do a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Elvareto?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Abstain.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Abstain.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays, and two abstains.
Okay, next we have a consider, that motion does pass. Next we have consideration for the discontinuation of the district heat system. Mr. Heron?
I've got you listed here as the presenter.
Good thing you stuck around.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, Ike could have filled in for you. He'd have done just fine. Right, Ike?
Yeah.
I was ready.
Yeah. And again, this is just a, this is just setting the public hearing, is all it is, so.
And that's just questions from my earlier presentation. In light of time, I'll just open it up to questions.
Okay, so the request is to set a public hearing for June nineteenth, at which time the city council would act on approving the discontinuation of the district heat system effective July one, twenty twenty. Is there a motion for that?
No.
Most made and seconded, discussion.
Is that like seven-oh-one?
Is that a true seven-oh-one, this one? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is consideration of setting public hearing date to consider Wilmer Municipal Utility Financial Assistance Program.
Again, unless there's questions regarding the resolution in your packet, I will yield the floor back to Mayor Kelvin.
Move to approve.
Second.
Most made and seconded to approve setting a public hearing for June nineteenth, at which time the city council would act on approving the Wilmer Municipal Utility Financial Assistance Program and adopt a resolution delegating responsibility for existing and administrative, administering the program to Wilmer Municipal Utilities. Most made and seconded, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you.
I guess I kept you here for no reason. I'm sorry about that, John.
Oh, no.
I hope you enjoy the next seven minutes of your evening.
Thank you.
Have a great evening. Thank you, sir. Next, the consideration of a resolution to increase the firefighter PRA retirement benefit plan. Chief Hanson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you, you have a consideration of approval for a resolution to increase the firefighter PRA retirement benefit level from three-five-hundred dollars per year of good service to four-thousand dollars per year of good service, beginning January first, two thousand and eighteen, and then also reviewing the benefit level every two years.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Most made and seconded to consider a resolution to increase the firefighter PRA retirement benefit level from, up to four, from three-five-hundred to four-thousand dollars per year of service, beginning January one of twenty eighteen, and then also to have the council set that as a, reviewed every two years in the future. Discussion. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. How was that considered when they receive it? You know, somebody's got ten years and they get forty thousand dollars. Is that, is that income, or does that person, that particular year?
Right.
It is.
It's, if they take it as a lump sum payment, and so for, well, Chief Hanson- It's -- if they take it as a lump sum payment, and so for -- well, Chief Hanson, would you like to answer it? I apologize. Chief Hanson.
That's all right, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Christensen, they can take it as a lump sum payment when they reach the age of fifty, or they can roll it over into a different retirement fund. If they do take a lump sum payment, then they pay all the taxes and the penalties and all that stuff.
Okay, so they have the option of taking it monthly for so many years if they rolled it into another program?
If they rolled it into a different program, yes.
Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Additional questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Osmeus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Six ayes, seven nays, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Chief Hanson, thank you guys for -- particularly those that stuck around through the downturn. You know the guys I'm talking about, and we had a number of firefighters who left us, and they stuck around, and this is an opportunity for the city to basically tell them, thanks for sticking around and believing in the system that was laid out in front of them, and they're going to see the reward for that. So, thank you, council, for supporting that as well. Next is consideration approval of memorandum of agreement for the supervisory group. Mr. Holland.
Mayor and council, this is something I'm filling in for Human Resources that's been brought before you before and is being brought back again tonight. This was drafted by our Human Resources Attorney, or Labor Attorney Frank Madden. This was previous language that was drafted from another bargaining unit. But basically, if you look at number one there, there's a payout of sick leave slash severance to eligible employees shall be in accordance with Article 7.4 of the collective bargaining agreement. Such payouts shall be placed in the employee's health care savings plan in accordance with all IRS regulations. Furthermore, paragraph two in Article 11.3 is not valid. The employee cannot select a cash payment of their accrued sick leave, which, Mayor, I did get a copy this afternoon of the contract between the city and the Willmar supervising unit, which identifies what they're talking about as far as that being not valid. We had a question about that, so I did get a copy of that, and I did get the answer to Councilmember Nelson's question about who drafted this and who approved it. So with that, I would make a recommendation to approve this.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve memorandum of agreement for the supervisory group as presented. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a quick question, since is this become an addendum to that agreement, then? Since there's paragraphs and things in here that relate to another document, does it become an addendum to the agreement?
Yes, it would be part of that as an MOA.
Okay.
Councilmember Schwantes.
And can you share with us what paragraph two in Article 11.3 states?
Yes, I can. My glasses, it's rather lengthy.
Summarizing it.
I want to just try to get to the -- it's four paragraphs, but in particular, it says, payout of sick leave slash severance to eligible employees shall be in accordance with Article 7.4 of the collective bargaining agreement. Such payouts shall be placed in the employee's health care savings plan in accordance with all IRS regulations. And that's in particular, the reason I read that is because we have a particular retiree that has some funds that could be paying his health insurance by doing this process, from my understanding. But I can continue to read the whole thing if you'd like.
I think the question that we'd had last time was, what is that article and what does it state? So.
That's the substance of it. Basically, employees who retire may continue to participate in the employee's health insurance group in accordance with the provisions of the Minnesota statute, and employee who elects to continue and participate in the employee's health insurance group after retirement shall be responsible for paying their full premium. After December 31, 2016, employees shall have the option upon retirement of a cash payment of their accrued sick leave pursuant to Article 7.4, or the establishment of a post-employment health care savings plan pursuant to regulations of MSRS. The option chosen by the employee shall apply to all employees. Finally, this payment shall be made within forty-five days following the employee's termination date, whichever is greater. If an employee dies before any and all of the applicable severance is paid into the health -- HCSP, which is the health, what, care savings plan, the money cannot be received by the HCSP. In this event, the severance payment shall be made to the retiring employee's estate.
Councilmember Schwantes.
So, the last part that you read is contained in 11.3, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and yet that's our second article, our second paragraph in this memorandum of agreement? So, is there value in having the part that's underlined in this memorandum of agreement?
I just erased my documents as you were talking, so let me look at this. We have a hard copy.
Can I go with it?
Okay. Would you repeat your question? I'm sorry.
So, the last part of what you read that's in Article 11.3?
Yes.
Is exactly the terminology in paragraph two that's referenced to? It's exact -- it's basically the same wording. So, the question is, and I think this is what our question was at the last meeting, that was asked to be clarified, the line that is underlined, furthermore, paragraph two in Article 11.3 is not valid, the employee cannot select cash payment, blah, blah, blah. The question is, is that underlined statement necessary, or should -- is that intended to be deleted and it was just an internal note?
Well, I'm at the disadvantage because I'm not familiar with this document. This was, as you know, brought together by our labor attorney and our HR, so I don't know the motivation behind it, so I'm at a disadvantage. I hate to say that, you know, we put it off again, but I know -- because I know this has been brought up before, so I hope we're not proposing that, but I don't know. I think Robert would like to say something.
Mr. Scott, and before you comment on that, I think what we should try to do is, if we want some changes to this, we should direct staff to make those changes and assume that that will be done unless they come back to us, but, you know, it's imperative that we move this forward. Mr. Scott.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor, if I am understanding the question of Councilmember Schwantes correctly, the underlined sentence in paragraph one of the MOU is stating that paragraph two in Article 11.3 of the collective bargaining agreement is not valid, and then continues the employee cannot select a cash payment of their accrued sick leave. I interpret that to be just a clarification. It's stating the same thing as the first part of that sentence stays, but there's no harm in including it. It's just to be clear, everyone's on the same page, so you don't have to reference the actual language in the CBA every time you want to know what that means. That's my view of it.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just a clarification. This appears to be a standalone document, but it references another document, so how does this document become part of the other document?
This is a practice that is undertaken occasionally in labor context. You have a collective bargaining agreement rather than reopen the agreement and have substantive negotiations on the terms of the collective bargaining agreement. The parties to the agreement come together and say, we have an MOU saying this issue has arisen, and we're all going to follow it until the next time the contract opens. And I don't see anything improper in doing that. It's not a formal contract amendment, it's a statement by both parties to the contract that this is the way we're going to follow it until we can fix it in the next negotiations.